Any one else?
So I just want to go over maybe just some housekeeping for the new members. So in order for the people online to hear you, you have to press the button, the push button on your microphone. It will light up green. They'll, you don't have to hold it. They'll be able to hear you online and then we do encourage you to turn it off. These are somewhat sensitive, so turn yourself off and then just make sure to turn yourself on or the people online will not be able to hear us.
Okay, so we can get started. Have a quorum. Fortunately, we have new members to make a quorum, so. Okay. Oh, there she is. We're just laying bets whether you'd be virtual or in person. That's right. Okay, you want to call us to order?
Planning Commission meeting is called to order on July 27, 2022 at 7:04 PM.
Thank you, Cynthia. Would you take the role, please?
Chair Williams.
Here.
Vice Chair Reese.
Present.
Commissioner Cornell. Commissioner Dai.
Here.
Commissioner Glasser.
Here.
Commissioner Herring.
Here.
Commissioner Rivera.
Here.
Please note for the record that Commissioner Giblin and Trustee Blakemore are absent.
Okay. Thank you very much. We will proceed with the approval of the minutes from the May meeting. Does anyone have any comments or corrections to the minutes?
I just saw the one line that Jim called the meeting to order, but then you were there. So I just, I can't, and I can't quite remember. It's possible that he did, but.
And Jim pointed it out, so. And then there's what, another line further down that under public comment, Vice Chair noted the written comments that were included within the packet. I think that should be Chair, not Vice Chair. And I have a question on, so it said Chris Peray was absent, but he actually did join at 8:20. Do we list him as absent up top? And then the only other thing I noticed was on page five, the paragraph that says Reese asked the Ortiz. I think it's probably Reese asked Ortiz, so that's just a simple typo. Does anyone else have any comments or changes to the minutes? And for the new members, when we take the vote, you will abstain because you were not at the meeting.
Okay, I have no other changes. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of May 31, 2022, with the changes that were noted.
Second.
Okay.
Okay. Chair Williams.
Yes.
Vice Chair Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Cornell.
Yes.
Commissioner Dai, you're abstaining.
Abstaining.
Commissioner Glasser.
Yes.
Commissioner Herring.
Yes.
And Commissioner Rivera, you are abstaining as well. Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Before we go on with the rest of the agenda, we have two new members joining the Planning Commission. I guess you drew the short straw, but we appreciate you joining. And before you introduce yourselves, I think we'll just, we'll just go around and have each of the existing Commission members just introduce ourselves first. So Stephanie, would you like to?
There we go. I'm Stephanie Herring. I've been on the Planning Commission now since seven years. Yeah, just Madeline was, I was pregnant when, actually.
That's correct, that's correct.
So yeah, it's been a little while. I can measure time by children's age. And yes, I have two young kids here in town and one at the elementary school, one at New Explorers. So very interested in, you know, thinking about how we make a town a great place for not only families that are here today, but hopefully for families that are here in the future.
Stephanie, could you? I, I mean, I actually like this, if we could, a little bit about what you do professionally, if that's okay, for all of us too, because I think that's of great interest.
Not top secret, so. I work for NOAA, the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration. I'm a scientist there and I run a group that does surface of the sun to the bottom of the sea. We work on solar terrestrial physics, monitoring space weather and mapping the seafloor and a little bit of climate change work in between, so hitting the middle atmosphere as well.
My name is Jim Reese. I've lived in Netherlands since 2010 and been on the Planning Commission since 2018. And I am retired military, but I'm very active with my church and doing volunteer work in the community and of course on town boards and trying to help progress our town forward. Thank you. Army.
Thank you, Jim. My name is Steve Williams. I am the current Chair of the Planning Commission. Lived in Netherlands now for 28 years. Raised our family, our daughter and son here, went to school and here in Netherlands and, and they turned out pretty good. So I think that's a, that's a, you got, that's what you got to look forward to, Stephanie. Matter of fact, when I used to come to the meetings, I used to always tell them, I'm off to make Netherlands a better place to live. And they would, at first they were impressed and then they started rolling their eyes. So I'm not sure what that means, but, but anyway, I've been on the Planning Commission, actually in two different stints for a total now of 15 years of the 28 that I've been here. Thanks to Roger, he brought me back. I guess I must have done something wrong and, but anyway, that's, oh, and professionally, I worked 25 years for NCAR, National Center for Atmospheric Research in Boulder. I guess technically I still work for them. I'm a part-time advisor to the Director's Office, so I'm still there. I can't, so anyway, as a meteorologist and scientist. Okay, Linda?
Linda Glasser, and I've lived in Netherlands for a really long time. And I actually, I, a really, really long time. I'd be giving away my age if I told you. I graduated from this building from high school. I went to CU and then I worked at Eldora for years. It put me through college and I worked for the post office for 25 years and retired from there. And now I drive a scooter around town.
I'm Roger Cornell. I first joined the Planning Commission in 1986. I moved, I actually bought a lot up here in 1977. But we moved up here in 80 and built our house up there on the hill and have lived there ever since with my wife Karen of 52 years now. And raised two daughters who both went through the school. And there seemed to be pro and con about the school, but everybody that had a parents that cared and had a family excelled at that school. And they all have gone on and done great, great careers from the basic training that they got at Netherlands Elementary School. I've been on the board, I guess I served two or three, three, four-year terms. I was interim mayor once when one of the mayors resigned for a little over a year. I was a mayor pro temp a second time when the mayor resigned and I was, I just had so much on my plate that I had to go find another person to take on the job of being mayor, but I stayed on the board as mayor pro temp. So twice I've been through that transition. You know, so that was the interesting part and I think other than from about 85, I was trying to look at this, 85 to 2000, I worked on the site team at the high school and did not, was not on the Planning Commission just for those five years. Other than that, I've actually been on the PC since 86 and I guess what, served about 10 years as the Chair till I got Steve to take over for me. So as I've said numerous times, in which I think that, you know, other fellow people have said, this town, and particularly for me, this building is a huge part of my life.
Okay. Anything else, or you want to say something about what you did before you retired?
I'm the one that brought that up.
Yeah.
Before I retired, I worked at the town here as a planning commissioner. I, I worked 30 years at Facilities Management, which was stationed down in the stadium there. And I was a supervisor of carpenters and painters. And we'd make, basically our biggest mission was that, it was divided up in campus, but I had 104 classrooms that we would keep, keep bright and lights on and keep in shape. And I had about, well, depending on from six to 12-person crew. But that's what I did for 20-some years as a, as a supervisor. Before that, I was a carpenter in the carpenter, just a general carpenter shop there, so.
Okay.
It was a wonderful, it was a wonderful life and it was also very good to be able just to commute. Everybody said, how the hell you do it? But it actually is a better commute than from Longmont, to commute down from, from Netherlands to Fort Worth, so. And then for many years, there was great bus service and that made a huge difference. Well, not a huge difference, but it was great. It was like a whole nother group of friends that you got met on the bus, so. Enough said, thank you.
Army. Okay, thank you. All right, now you're on the hot seat, your first public comment. Mike, you want to start us off? Tell us a little bit about yourself and what inspired you to join this motley crew?
So I'm Mike Dai. I guess it's been a moment of madness to join the Planning Commission, but I've, I grew up in Boulder and, you know, as a young kid, I remember coming through Netherlands and up to the Indian Peaks olderness in Netherlands. Even though I didn't really grow up here, it's always had a special place in my heart. I've lived in town in Netherlands for about 14 years now. My wife Camille and I are over in Old Town. And just, Netherlands is the only place that I want to be. It's just a very special place and that's, that's why I joined the Planning Commission to, to do some service as well. Professionally, I wear a lot of hats these days. My primary profession for many years has been software development and engineering. Right now, I'm working as a data scientist with a volcanologist in Virginia Tech, developing artificial intelligence and machine learning algorithms to help predict eruptions of a volcano in Tanzania. I also, just in the last several weeks, started contracting and handyman business in town here, fixing things up. And my third job is teaching Tai Chi down in Boulder. Yeah, thanks, it's great to be here.
Okay, thank you. Chris?
Okay. So growing up, I lived, was born in Florida. My dad was in the Navy, served 20 years. We traveled around, lived in Japan, New Orleans, Indiana, all over the country. Moved to Colorado about 10 years ago, met my wife, lived in Boulder for about four years. Moved to Austin, Texas for a five-year stint, missed the mountains, decided to move back. Been coming up to Ned since 10 years ago and with everything going remote, was like, I would love to live there. Have a good friend from college, an old friend of mine, 20 years, who had moved here before me. And so we ended up running an Airbnb to visit and look at houses down the mountain and realized our Airbnb was for sale. We made an offer that week and decided to move and make Ned our home. And seven months ago, we had a daughter and so we have a seven-month-old. And after meeting neighbors and friends and other people who are involved, you know, I really wanted to get involved. Saw, you know, it's unique town, unique dynamics, a lot of tourism, a lot of stuff going on. But it's also, I want to make sure that there's a place for my daughter to grow up here and there's, you know, schools and care and, you know, also thought in how the town's growing and, you know, keeping its charm, but also being modern and being sustainable, helping people who need to live here, you know, can work here and live here. You know, I just, after two years of living here, just, I feel like we found a secret that, you know, and I don't want to tell anybody, but I also want to say like, it's like really, really special. And whenever my family comes, it's, it's, I just want to take them everywhere in town and go all the restaurants, all the places to go, shops and everything. And so I've become very passionate about it and I care. As far as professionally, I work in software development, manage software developers. Our niche is auto auction software, big car guy, love cars. And luckily get to kind of combine those passions of software and, and cars and I really enjoy it, working with people, working with developers, making product, a big product nerd. I care about how things are packaged and delivered and how users experience it. So that's kind of me, so, nice to meet everyone.
Okay, yes, welcome and we will appreciate your expertise, I'm sure, so. And Cynthia said, we are going to go easy on you this evening. We only have some discussion items. Normally we'll have some action items, which are a lot more involved and in-depth and so forth. But anyway, so continuing along. Do we have anyone in the public that would like to speak on anything that is not on tonight's agenda? Now is your opportunity. Come up to the podium, give your name and address and you have three minutes to tell us what's on your mind. Okay? If not, I'll, I'll close the public comment for items not on the agenda. As I mentioned, we don't have any action items this evening. We have four discussion items to bring up tonight. And we'll start off with the Netherlands Food Pantry Relocation Project Concept. And I don't know, is it, okay, I'm sorry, yes, please give your name and address when you get up to the podium.
Change the view real quick.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Commissioners, for having me here tonight. I'm really actually very happy to be presenting this. This is a really exciting project concept. My name's Nicole Cavalino. I am the new Executive Director of the Netherlands Food Pantry. Chris Current, as you all know, had been running the program for quite a long time and developed a really fabulous program that we were able to serve our community through. We do this program through the West Wing, oh, I'm sorry, Miranda. I started doing mine. Oh, sorry, it's so tiny up there. But our mission at the food pantry is to serve the hunger needs and the basic needs of our community. We serve Netherlands, we also serve Jamestown, Ward and Wonderview through our pop-up communities. We serve about 1,200 individuals per year through our pantry and that's through food distribution. So we have three programs. We have food distribution, 12,000, thank you, much different number. We have a food distribution pantry that we do on Sundays from, or Saturdays from 10 to noon. We also have a clothing closet and then we also have our community gardens. All of those are actually located right in that West Wing, right next door here. And I welcome everybody to come and visit, see what we do over there. But we are pretty much open six days a week. Our main service hours, though, are on Saturday from 10 to noon. So going back, we are a non, a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization and right now, we take about 1,800 square feet of the West Wing location. We're in about four rooms over there. So I'm sorry that map is so small, but if you can see it, we are on the north side of the building primarily and then we have one room on the left side, on the south side of the building, towards, more towards the exit. All of our operation right now is actually out of the West Wing. So besides our pop-up pantries, we are, because we're nonprofit, we're all grant and individual donations. Our funding all comes through grants and individual donations. And like I said, we serve about 12,000 individuals a year. We roughly see, that was at our height, I would say, during COVID. Right now, we are at about 1,000 a month, if not between 700 to 1,000 a month, depending. And unfortunately, with the increase in prices of gas and food and just food supply chain issues, we're actually seeing a rapid increase over the last couple of months of folks needing our services more. So our Saturdays are definitely getting busy with our food distribution. So moving on, please, thank you. Just a couple of points to mention. We are in the West Wing. We've been there for over 10 years now. When we first signed our use agreement with the town, it was intended to be mostly storage, mostly food distribution. At this point in time, because of the need of our community and because of what an excellent job Chris Current did, we have really expanded outside of what that area was ever intended for us to be. That wing was never really intended to be in operation six days a week. We have been so grateful to have the opportunity to be in that space and we've used it to the best that we could possibly use it. But it is definitely time to find us a new home. When I came on, I've been on for about six months now, within the first week or so of me being on, we had our fire inspection walkthrough and it was brought to my knowledge, even though I've worked in this building and I've worked in this town for almost five years now, I, I was not aware of the safety issues in the West Wing. And it came to my attention and I'm there almost six days a week. So it really came to my attention that we do not have sprinklers or a fire alarm in that wing. And really, as I'd mentioned, it was never intended for the business that we have going there. And, but the business that we have going there is a business that this community really needs. And we serve a lot of folks in our community and around. We actually have partnerships with Gilpin County now. We've been meeting with all of our other food pantries, seeing how they're operating. We have definitely expanded and expect to expand further because of the need for food and basic needs in our community, in our peak-to-peak region. One other thing I always like to point out also is that besides just basic foods that we provide for our families, we also provide infant and childcare products. So when formula was at a need, we were making sure we had formula on ourselves. Right now, something that's becoming very big also are pet needs. So as people's paychecks are getting tighter and tighter, we're actually able to also provide pet needs, so pet food, that sort of thing also. So we try to hit all bases as we can to make sure that those needs are met. And again, it's all done out of that West Wing. So just to mention that. So our daily operations, though, all happen there. Right now, we are in about 1,800 square feet of the West Wing. To operate appropriately and efficiently, we would need about 2,500 square feet. We're, we're thinking if we could gain another 700 square feet, it would really allow our operation to work more efficiently and grow with the need of our community. The problem, though, with that and moving out of this facility, as we all know, Netherlands has very limited property available. And we have searched, we have looked at land, we, we actually looked at the apothecary at one point in time. We've been looking at other properties as they're opening up, thinking, can we adapt them? Can we make it possible for us? Is parking, that's a, that's an issue. That was one of the things with the apothecary. We did not want to stress out for street further with parking, even though we, our main business hours are Saturday mornings from 10 to noon, but still, we want to take that into consideration. We also want to think about the privacy of our clients that come through. And that was one of our big pieces with being anywhere in the, more of the downtown business district, is that we want to keep the privacy of our clients who come and use our resources as sacred as possible. So we've looked, we have had a really tricky time in finding anything that would be available. And then on top of it, the expense of purchasing land and then building upon the land, it would be really, really a tough stretch for a capital gains campaign, as much as we'll try. We'll try our best to be able to do it. So what we were thinking and just sort of in discussion, just trying to brainstorm together, is where could we go that is already possibly established, may be able to provide a location for us that we can move into more cost-effectively, stay within the community, stay close to our partners? And I actually was having a conversation with Dawn one night, just trying to brainstorm it. And I thought, hey, what about the southwest parking lot of the community center? I've been looking at it for years and really we have trailers there right now. And we both thought, hey, actually, that would make a lot of sense because it's right still on the community center location, the same location that we're already established in. It would be more of a relocation than a moving. And if we were able to relocate, we would able, we would be able to get out of that wing, allow the town to really move forward in what their plans are, which are plans are for whatever it is that's going to happen in the West Wing. And then we would able, be able to possibly move to this location for a much less cost in building a property rather than buying the property and then having to actually build upon that pop, that property that we purchased. So in that discussion, this came about. So thank you so much for allowing us to have this concept discussion with you. One thing that we want to point out is that the timing of this, that has come and why we jumped on the agenda so quickly and thank you for making room for us. We have a grant available to us that would be a Worthy Cause Grant through Boulder County that will be due on the 19th of August. So the timeline for this is, we would want to discuss this with you, get your feedback, see if you have any concerns. And then we would like to bring this to the Board of Trustees on the 16th, see how they feel about it. Again, also still as a concept, as a concept project. But then with that, and if we have the support behind that, we can apply for grant for the Worthy Cause Grant, as I mentioned. And the Worthy Cause Grant is really a great opportunity that would allow opportunity that would allow nonprofits to have funding behind them to build and build the nonprofits behind them. So we would be able to actually apply to this with a concept project. So even if we have support, but we don't have the actual project set yet, but we have a good parameter of what we would want, we actually can go and apply for the Worthy Cause Grant and see if that's possible. So that's how we ended up here today. We have actually, before coming to this group also, we've met with several different people in town, important people in town that have ideas and know the town. And we met with Fire. We were able to talk with Miranda. We were able to talk with Cynthia. We actually spoke with SafeBuild. We were able to talk with Dawn. Everybody that we've mentioned it to, we have gotten some really great ideas about how we could make this work, how we can make this work for the community, make it sustainable, and make it green, make it a nice-looking building that we actually could have on the property, and actually put a building up on the property that if it was ours for, let's say, three to five years, and we were able to then, maybe we expand, or we have partners, we would then have another building on the community center property that then would also be available as another building. So a lot of benefits to it. One thing, though, that I did want to mention, if we can go on to the next slide, are just some of our challenges that we have identified. I'm sorry, that's so tiny there. Some of the challenges that we have identified are things that actually, just in discussion, we've kind of come up with ways around them, or actually things that we think that maybe are not as much challenges, but things that we can work with, with town. Just a couple of them are the possibility of the town or the Board of Trustees not being interested. So that's a possibility right off the bat. We have to take that into consideration. Any sort of neighborhood opposition, that might also be a challenge to this concept project of having that. For the most part, that side of the parking lot right now is underutilized. It's about 4,000 square feet, that piece of it. We would need about 2,500 square feet of it. So the parking issue being a possible challenge also, that actually, it would be a smaller footprint than the actual land itself. And we're hoping that if we were able to move on to that piece of the property, we would be able to alleviate the West Wing, again, allow whatever projects is going to happen in the West Wing that's being planned, and then possibly allow for additional parking up there, because we will have moved down below. A couple other things, though, would be possibly code restrictions. We spoke with SafeBuild. We spoke with Cynthia and talked about just different ideas with code. And we would want to make sure that we worked with town on this, to make sure that we were up to par in everything, that everything that we were putting in was green, that it was sustainable, and going along with any code matters that actually may be a challenge for us in that. Utility access, we were looking in that area. We would have access to electricity and water just because we're on the same location and the same parking lot. So tapping into that might be a challenge, but something we're identifying is something that we could possibly work through. And then just basically any unforeseen property structural issues that we may find out you can't build on that piece of land. That may happen also. So those are our challenges. I would absolutely say, though, the benefits are, it's a much longer list there to the left, in that we would actually, if we were able to move to this location, we would be able to stay centralized to where we are, and again, stay where we're already established as an organization. And we would have a large enough facility at 2,500 square feet to truly house the three programs that we have, which would be the clothing closet, food distribution, and our gardens within that 2,500 square feet. Just kind of going down the list, I mentioned some of these already, but it would allow the town to have access to that space that right now we are really taking up such a large piece of it. And we would allow then access to doing whatever the plan is for the town, so we can kind of get out of the way from whatever the plan is without displacing us. There would be minimal impact on the community center parking, as I had mentioned. We shouldn't be taking up that much space. It's about 2,500 square feet and about a 4,000-square-foot spot over there on the West Wing, or, I'm sorry, the southwest parking lot. We would also be able to make this building ADA accessible. So my background is primarily working with people with disabilities. So before I moved to Nederland, I worked in Los Angeles, and I worked with, my whole career was with people with disabilities, making sure that accessibility was a very important piece on everybody's agenda. There's one thing right now in this building, we're not really to that point. We try our best in keeping our aisles open, but because we've adapted really the old-school wing, it's hard to have ADA accessibility as much as we would like it to be up to standards. In our new building, we would be able to do that. We would be able to make sure that that building is available to everybody to visit. Coming into that building, we would also make sure that there were sprinkler systems up to code for fire. We would like it to be a steel structure, so then that way it can be sustainable to fire also, and just the actual structure itself to be a worthy structure to put into our property. Also, it would allow us to have office space. So right now, as I mentioned, we're available about six days a week. Sundays is really the only day we're not open, and myself and Katrina are there about six days a week. And we don't really have any office space, because we do our best to use whatever space we have for food distribution and clothing, our clothing closet. So we make the best of what we have. But a lot of times, we're writing on our laptops and laptops and kind of squeezing into corners. So this would also allow us at the 2,500, 2,500 square feet, to be able to have office space for ourselves and our volunteers. We have about, I feel like the last number I heard was 27 volunteers that are actively come through the food pantry and the clothing closet during the week. So to have space also for us to be a little more comfortable in our workspace would be really a nice, nice thing to have. Safety, it would satisfy the safety requirements for our funders. That's something that really sparked this in my head also, as I took on the position and I started talking with our grant managers. It's very aware to our grant funders that we're in a facility that is not fire-safe. We don't have sprinklers. We don't have a fire alarm. To our granters, and that's a concerning factor, because they are funding something that we really can't protect. So on that, that would satisfy them also, to be able to have us move out of the facility, to be able to realize that, you know, we're keeping their investment safe. But another piece of that also is, we would be the food and clothing for a natural disaster or an emergency disaster that would happen in our community. We are considered part of the emergency plan with our food. And as of right now, it's a little scary to me to think that in an emergency, we're in a building that actually could burn down, but yet it houses the food that we would need for our community in that time. So that, I think, would probably be my highest factor, besides the safety of having our clients come through, having us have our office spaces in a building that is not fire-safe right now. I think, for the most part, the emergency piece of it, with our food actually being sheltered in a location that is not safe, that is a whole nother factor behind this. So it puts a little urgency underneath it. Also, by moving, we would, and by moving on to the same property, we would actually also be supporting the 2013 comprehensive plan, in that we wanted by 2020 to have accessible social services for our community members. By keeping us at this location, we would be accessible. We would still be centered in town. We would be right with the community center. So if there was an emergency, we would be right here. We would just be as close as being in the West Wing, but a little bit safer. And we would be able to continue partnering with those really essential resources that we have made partnerships with, that we work with within this building. So on that, I wanted to open it up to questions and discussion, if we have. And the first question I have for you is if you have any concerns on the plan that we have presented, in that we would move our location to the southwest parking lot and pretty much relocate to the southwest parking lot. The building itself would be funded by grants, the Worthy Cause, as I had mentioned. If we can apply by August 19th, when that comes through, we should have an award date by December, to see if that goes through. That would be able to hopefully get this process going by next summer. We know how things work with getting all of that moving, but it could be something that could move a lot quicker than us finding property somewhere else and having to start from the ground level up. So I wanted to bring this to the board here, our commission here, before we go to the Board of Trustees, to see if you have concerns with that, if there's anything that we've missed in our thoughts and our brainstorming of this possible concept of relocating on to another piece of the community center property. And then from there, my second question would be, if you support us going to the board. So do you have any concerns first, or questions or thoughts about this concept? And then would you support us going to the Board of Trustees, moving forward and talking to them further about it?
Chair Williams, I just want to offer a point of clarification, that this is just a concept review. If there was a desire to move forward, even after the Board of Trustees, they would then apply for doing a land use application, which then turns this quasi-judicial, which is why the desire here is for Nicole to really assess what your interest is, because they don't want to go for their funding or that application if the interest isn't there. So this would, if there was support, this would come back to you in a quasi-judicial in an application.
Okay, great. Thank you, Miranda. Before we go to the commission for questions or concerns, would our public like to add anything to what Nicole mentioned? Dawn, please give your name and address and...
Dawn Baumhofer, Community Center Manager, Nederland resident. So 506-119-SOUTH. I am in total support of this project. We came up with another concept last summer or last fall, which met with a great deal of opposition. And one of the overwhelming things that was voiced at that time, people wanted to see the pantry stay on the community center property, on the community center site. So when I say site, it's more than just this building. It includes the parking lots, the property across Forest Street. So it's the entire site. So it's a large piece of property. As Nicole mentioned, that particular, we're talking about straight out those doors where those trailers are against that west fence line. That just came about because we needed money post-pandemic and during the pandemic. And people on Fourth Street needed parking. So that was kind of, yeah, we can do that. And they pay us monthly rent to park there. But it does not, we're not a storage facility. So that was like a stopgap thing. Some people have mentioned, yeah, what are we going to do about that? And so while those folks need a place to put things up, human needs are much higher priority. I thought it was a great idea. This is an underutilized portion of the lot. People rarely park there. There's maybe, Kurt and I looked at the usage, our office manager, and maybe 15 days out of the year that that portion of the parking lot is fully utilized. So it's an excellent location. It's flat. Utilities should be, that's way down the road. But I'm completely in support of it. I did put an email and a call into JVA to see if they had, you know, any questions or concerns. I haven't heard back. I think that's a good thing, that I haven't heard back, because they usually jump right on it if there's a red flag. So...
Dawn, who did you contact? Who did you contact?
Andrew.
It would be Nathan.
It would be Nathan.
Yeah, it's not going to be an Andrew purview, so we'll get you Nathan's contact.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have.
Oh, you do? Okay, yeah. So just...
I'd just most recently been dealing with Andrew because of the grease trap thing, so sorry. Okay, so anyway, I can reach out to them again. But actually, JVA, in my conversations with them, going forward for a new site development plan for the community center that will be part of the new comp plan, they want to see that as well. They wanted to see the development come on the community center site, on the southeast sides. In addition, the biggest thing is we've been working with the fire inspector for years, and as pantry operations grew, they have become increasingly uncomfortable. And they really, really want... Storage is one thing. It was always intended just to utilize those West Wing rooms for storage until we could demolish the West Wing. The demo of the West Wing has always been the plan, continues to be the plan. It's not, the issues totally outweigh the benefits of saving that particular part of the building. That's why there isn't a sprinkler system. The water and the heat was cut to that, as you know, when this part of the building was remodeled. So this solves a lot of problems. It gets the one operation that's person-dependent, people-dependent, out of the West Wing. Then it's easy when we start talking in the future, as we advance the site plan for the community center. It's easy to move stuff. It's not easy to move people in an operation such as the pantry. That is why I am in complete support of this. And I know that they'll do a good job of architecture and meeting code and crossing all their Ts and dotting their Is. The relationship that the community center has with the pantry and the Nederland area seniors and the clothing closet is just completely, it's like we're different organizations, but we work very closely together. We've had collaborative grants together in the past, and it's a very positive and smooth operational relationship. So I want to do everything I can to support them. They do everything they can to support us. And the point to the emergency preparedness, disaster, disaster preparedness is huge. That is, they're an asset that the county, they're, you know, it's just part of our disaster response for this community. So thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks, Dawn. Anything else? Katrina?
Yeah, just cut to the chase, too. You know, we don't have to, I know you're going to have something great to say, but please don't, you know, go over and over for that, you know?
Of what's already been said?
To repeat, yes, please.
I'm actually Katrina Harms with the Peak-to-Peak Housing and Human Services Alliance. I won't repeat what she said. Full disclosure, I am the operations manager for the pantry as well. I will give you some latitude, Roger. One of the things I just wanted to point out, Nicole's doing a great job as the executive director. When the pandemic hit, we tripled the amount of food we were distributing. It has now gone back down a little bit, but it will never go back down to pre-pandemic levels, not in the near future. And we did look at numbers and space and weight of food and space that the food was taking up and what we were doing to settle on the 2,500 square feet. And we feel very satisfied that that covers present and future, which we hope will not be another pandemic. So we realize you don't plan for the 100-year disaster. But from the Peak-to-Peak Housing and Human Services side, I worked on the American Rescue Plan Act with Boulder County this last year about how to spend the money. We do have the opportunity to bring some money up here. They are very interested and understand, I'm not sure the commissioners do, but I know that the people in Boulder County Housing and Human Services and Community Services understand that our lack of facilities really inhibits us being able to bring the programs that should be available to us to the mountains. And this is a big step in that direction. Not only the possibility of partnering with them for this building, we're not going to say, yes, they're coming in, because we're being a little selfish and wanting to focus on the pantry, but they do want to see us grow and be able to take advantage of behavioral health and mental health and disability, making things more accessible, which we have such a challenge with. So I do know that we have support for this, and there could be... So I do know that we have support for this and there could be other ways to bring in our Boulder County and our regional partners. Netherland is the hub for the human services in the Peak to Peak region. It's, it's an advantage, sometimes the community doesn't think so, to be able to take care of our community, make sure we know what's going on, who needs what and how to take care of them and make sure we're getting them the proper care. So having this kind of move into a dedicated social services, not social services, but a dedicated human services spot would be great. We already partnered with EFA, they have an office in here. Mental Health Partners has wanted to come up for years, so before Clinica, there was nowhere for them to go. They would have been a great partner for this. And there are other agencies and organizations that always ask, where can they be? And there just is not that. So that's all I wanted to add. The ARPA people, the people in that process were very excited that we were, that we had an opportunity to move, relocate. Not like I really like moving, but we have that opportunity. And so from that aspect, so hopefully I didn't bore you.
Thanks, thanks, Katrina. Cynthia, do we have anyone online that's in the public?
We do, but they're probably for, sorry, they're probably for solar, but Erica and Melody, if either one of you wanted to say anything about this.
Okay. I guess we'll, we'll move on to the Commission, but before we do that, basically, could you just give us a few more details about, maybe perhaps your timeline and also what the grant will, you know, how much money are we talking about? Will they be able to support everything that you're in the concept or that still has to be worked out?
We're working through the details currently. We, at 2,500 square feet, we actually were very fortunate to have an architect on our board who's working on plans with us. So we, we are assuming at 2,500 square feet, we can go at about $400 per square foot, which would bring us to about a million dollars worth of need and funding. We can apply for a worthy cause grant for the whole amount. In history, though, this Boulder County Worthy Cause, the most they've given in a grant is 750,000. So not that far from our actual goal of what they've actually given out before. We also have opportunity through other funders to be able to hit that level of a million dollars to be able to raise for the building itself. Otherwise, though, and, and that was, that's actually one of the big pieces about getting the land. It would allow us a million dollar ticket rather than closer to three or four million if we were to need to buy property. So that, we have been really looking at that, that price tag of what that looks like, even though a million is a lot to, to get from a funder or multiple funders. It's definitely more reasonable than trying to purchase property. So, but at 2,500 square feet, we're looking at about a million dollars in costs.
And timeline?
And timeline? So the application would go through by the end of, we would turn it on by the 19th of August. The award period, well, they would announce the award would be December. And so sometime in December, we would find out how much we would get, if we would get the full amount or a portion of the amount. And then in the meantime, though, between now and December, as much as this is a concept project for this spot, we're actually going to move forward applying for common, my gosh, I just blinked on it, worthy cause, common cause, I almost said worthy cause grants. We're going to apply for the worthy cause grant anyway, and also other grants in the meantime, because we know that even if this spot doesn't work for us, we have to move. So we have to be on it. We are hoping this can work because the price tag might be a little lower if we don't have to buy property. But in the meantime, between now and December, we're still going to be boots on the ground looking for other funders. All of the work that we're putting into this right now to create this plan and the drawing and all of the details to it, we'll use for our grant. And hopefully, if this doesn't come through, we can find another place to live and house ourselves, but we will be still moving forward with a worthy cause grant.
Very good, thank you. Okay, let's, let's bring it to the Commission for comments, concerns, questions. Roger, since you piped up, you get to go first. You spoke up first, so you get to go first.
Overall, yes, I, I think I would say that I'm in favor of this project. I just want to bring some things that, you know, you might put on, because you had quite a bit of list there. I think, you know, I would just say the generic that it will be built by code, safe build, tells exactly what to do. You don't really need to go through all those things. It'll have this and this and that. Of course it will, because it'll be built by the 2020 code.
Certainly.
My biggest, so one thing that I really feel that should be do, Don and, and Don, please help, is the, there is a master plan that, would it be eight, 10 years ago now? That a lot of effort was put into this. So I would just, and I can't sit there and say exactly how that was. I know town, town offices and, I was on that committee, so I should know more, but the entire lot was all tarselled out. I would actually like to see that pull off the shelf and opened and make sure, we don't have to answer now, but for the Board of Trustees, that that would show, look, this, this fits right into it, that's not, that's not an issue, but to actually say that, you know, this is addressed in a master plan, just like you brought up the comp, comp plan, would actually be wonderful to say that, you know, this drives right with the site, master site plan, which JVC certainly worked with us on. I know you know about it. So that, that would be one that, I think would just be a helpful thing. I guess it's just me being a male. When you said the southwest parking lot, I just, what in the world are you going to build a shop out in the southwest parking lot? So it's the west side of the east parking lot for those, well, that's the west parking lot, but that's only me. That's, that's just a way that you can get a laugh and that'll help you remember who that idiot is over in the corner. And I would ask, you know, that, something else to sell, that yes, it is a very small footprint, but actually, it, it probably is second, two floors, but if your architect, you know, two floors where the offices, much spaces up above where you could sit there and say, we honestly tried to make the smallest footprint on the lot. So, and Don, you're exactly right. 15, 20 days a year, this place is packed and the rest of the time, it just sits there. I, I understand that. That was the big thing that we talked about when we did that site plan. But, and the other one that, to me, is not a, certainly for, I bring it up so it's not throw a roadblock for me, but the idea of free land. It's been a while since I've been on the board, so, but I do know that we have quite, quite a few mills pays and our property taxes to keep the lights on and to keep this property going. So we're all paying for it. So, you know, maybe it's something in your presentation to think about or work with the treasurer to have a good answer. You know, as opposed to say leasing the land, the board, and this would not be, this commission wouldn't have anything to do with it. The Board of Trustees would in the end decide on that. But the idea that, you know, should someone be leased at a reasonable time, but I think just the idea of an explanation, and, you know, maybe during, and I may be a little off, but I don't think so, that there are several mills that we all pay, you know, to keep the lights on that, the entire community pays. And I think in the past, in the history is that the community says, yes, we agree and we want to have that, that the center there in the food bank. So it may be a wash, but it's certainly something to think about in your presentation. So those are the only things I could think of. If it's the southwest parking lot, my phrase, then it is. But I kept trying to picture, is it over here, up there?
Thank, thanks, Roger. One of the things I was going to suggest is if you could send your slideshow around or have Cynthia and Miranda...
It's in your agenda packet, I believe, right Cynthia?
I didn't see it.
Oh, it didn't make it, oh, never mind, you didn't send it, that's right. Yes, I'll email it.
That way the Commission can look at it...
Yes.
On a larger screen. And, and then send any comments in before the Board of Trustees meetings. I think that might be helpful as well, so...
Yes, thank you.
Yep, yep, very good. Chris?
Very impressive project. It's very, it's, it's, it's a big feat and I think it's a, serves a lot of important things that the community needs. I think it's really good. You know, I was just kind of looking at the mockup, I'm a very visual person, and I was curious, and maybe this is more of a question for Don, but the property, you know, the property lines, what's the setback look like? What does your concept for a 2,500 square foot building look like in that parking lot space, you know? I'd be curious to see that and kind of just, yeah, just, just to, you know, get a representation. I live on Bridge and I watch the parking lot every day, all day, and you're right, you know, capacity isn't, you know, a huge concern. I do wonder about growth, you know, over time, will you have enough parking? Will the community center have enough parking? Will you both at the same time have enough parking? And then the other thing I, I was kind of thinking about, especially in light of the fires in Ward last year, and a lot of people having to come and, and, and park here, you know, I mean, it was a, you know, a combination of a whole bunch of errors with the, the snow and the fires and the pandemic, people not being able to come into the community center, people were out in their cars in the parking lot. And, you know, I just, if there was a emergency, you're right now in this building, the supplies are here available, no one has to go outside. There's a little bit of a loss there with you being in another building. Have you looked or thought about a split between storing things in the community center, but officing housing and then, you know, having a door and a place for people to come to, but then have a smaller inventory in the building or something like that? You know, I don't know if you've thought about anything like that? Just something I thought of, just something to consider. Yeah, and then, you know, growth as far as storage, the amount of inventory you have in there, you know, is that going to be enough space in the long term and that kind of thing? I'd like to just think, maybe consider that in there, you know, that's all.
Absolutely.
Just my thoughts.
And if I, can I address actually one thing that both mentioned? Our plan actually would be, and again, it's a concept, so we are open to suggestions and how it would best fit the neighborhood and the community. But our, our thought would be that we would actually go east to west with the building instead of north and south. So then that way, we would not be super close to the luge, just in case that's part of a, a new project, we don't, we won't have to be rearranged at all by being too close with it. We could back up closer to the south side of the parking lot. And then we were also hoping that our building, we could actually build up upon. So we would assume the 2,500 square feet would be our base level, but then we would be able to put a mezzanine above it. And so we, we can go up and then if we needed to move out, we would plan it. So then that way, in the future, if there was space and there was need, that we would be able to build upon it. So that's actually, that is in our thought. Again, it's, it's at a very preliminary stage right now in concept, but absolutely, we want to think that we're not going to need to grow because that just means that our need is larger. And going through the pandemic and seeing the most that we've ever seen come through the food pantry and understanding that our community, the chances of it growing substantially in community members that are going to need the food pantry, we've most likely seen a cap or at least the highest point we've seen so far. So even if we went up some more in capacity, that we would have greater need, we would hopefully be able to build upon the building going up a little bit within the same building, so nothing more structurally. But then we, at this point in time, are planning that number based on our pandemic numbers, so not even on our average numbers, so.
Food doesn't stay here very long because people eat it. So storage is not, which is what we realized when we sat down and looked at everything.
We receive about 1,500 pounds of food a week, roughly, sometimes a lot more than that, depending on what our availability is. And as of right now, we go through that, I would say every two weeks, we are replenishing our food on our shelves. So everything that comes in goes out. We really don't store much food that isn't moving forward. We don't really even have that many opportunities to rotate our dates out on our foods because we have so much need. And we, we've really gotten very efficient in the last couple of months of making sure what we are bringing in is needed and is going out so we can get fresh contact in here also. Because storage is not so much of an issue, that's what my point is. Yep.
Okay, Linda?
I think a lot of my questions have been answered and you answered one definitely. The garden area, where would you relocate the garden area? And I know you have a greenhouse type in the back.
Yep.
Would you consider putting a greenhouse with that building as well?
Yes, and thank you, Linda, because that is actually one of the pieces that I would say primarily, we want to make sure that we have our food and our clothing safe right off the bat. So that 2,500 square feet would be for that. Actually, because if we went east and west, we would have a beautiful south side to be able to do a garden on. And actually, beautification wise, to have a garden on that side of the building, we could replicate something that we have here, maybe off of the side of the building, but we would want to bring the gardens with us. I think number one, we would want to make sure our resources are out. And if it took us, let's say, extra time to move the gardens over, we would eventually move them over. But it is my understanding that it wouldn't be such a rush to leave the gardens here, even for a season, to get us settled over there. But our plan is absolutely to stay together and keep our three programs together in the same facility.
And even the side of the hill going down onto Fourth Street would be an area of access for, for growth also, depending upon what the way the town looks at that.
Excellent.
I think those were my, those are my concerns and I am definitely for it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Linda. Mike?
Well, I think this is a really interesting, well thought out and inspiring concept. Definitely in support of it. I think a lot of the questions and comments have already been spoken that I had, but one thing that you'd mentioned was that what happens if the lot is unbuildable? And maybe going towards the Board of Trustees, trustees have a plan of how to figure out in advance if, to, to make sure that it is buildable and contingency plans on how to mitigate those, if it, if that were to happen. That's really all. Very good luck.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Stephanie?
There we go. Thanks, I had a couple of questions. I was noticing that in the current version of the lease, there are agreements for the food pantry and the community closet to use some of the multipurpose rooms for like 24 hours of course of a year. Is the intention that there, these, there are kind of those bigger common spaces that would still be accessible here? Or is your site design intended to also build in the larger purpose rooms? Or would you still just leverage the spaces here?
We would leverage a space here still. And actually, that would be one of the benefits of being so close by. It would, by being able to, we do use this room a lot, we, we do. But as everybody knows, multipurpose, but I, that would be specifically for pantry and for clothing closet. We would not be putting gathering spaces in there. That would actually change a lot of what we would need for code in the sense of congregating, gathering. And so we were trying to avoid that. And also our footprint would be larger for that to be able to...
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing, the 2,500 square feet didn't seem large enough for communal room. So I assumed that you would still keep the agreement with the community center for the larger purpose rooms.
Yes, but we would have a bathroom, hopefully, which would be lovely. So I come through this hall very often, all the way over there to go to the bathroom and a sink, those kind of things, but not actually a gathering space to have a meetings or, we may though, we have discussed if we can put a mezzanine on the top, that we would have to figure out if we would need an elevator to do that, which we may throw into our plan to just, you know... to just, you know, our wish list of putting it up there to make, if we do put a mezzanine to have that. If we did that, we may be able to have space for a conference room, I'm hoping, maybe, even just for our own board meetings or for staff meetings to be able to do something like that. But nothing as grandiose as this size room.
Sure. And I was kind of curious, because I did look at the 20, what is the currently, that sort of, it looks like it was developed in 2014, the community center site development plan, which I think is interesting, because I mean, this town's changed a lot since 2014. Right, and I actually think that, I mean, currently, it looked like, you know, there wasn't, to answer your question, Roger, a little bit, there wasn't a plan to put a building in that space. It was going to be sort of a garden, child play, improved drainage type of space. Yeah, there was no, there was no proposal to construct any infrastructure there. So it's not like it's displacing anything that was currently planned for. But one of the things I thought about, I didn't, and I don't know enough about your, where the community center lot lines are, but it has a building to number two in the back, looks like it's up by Forest Road, that's on the type, type development plan. And so I'm kind of, I'm just sort of curious, and this may be a question for Don more than you. Was that considered as, I don't know how, it's a cartoon picture, so nothing is to scale, I don't think, so I'm not sure how big it is. But is that another, is it a backup option? Did you consider that as an option?
So it's probably the Magnolia Schoolhouse that's on the side, which also has all utilities cut to it. There had been talk about moving that particular structure, but it's an older structure, it's not historic. It's on this side, correct? Is it on this side of Forest?
No, it's on the other side of Forest.
How about the Stone Garage?
Yeah.
It looks like there's a road. I mean, I think this is, this is Forest.
Oh, well, there's the Stone Garage and the two old biomass buildings, and they're all currently being utilized.
Okay.
So, yeah, so that is not suitable for pantry development. It has been looked into. And to speak to the original site plan for that space, they actually had a child play space crossing the driveway, which was not a good idea. And of course, that particular plan had many, many phases, and each phase was to undergo, you know, the net on public process and review. So this is a much better plan for that particular space. And it does incorporate the, with the gardens coming over there eventually, with them running east to west, it does incorporate still the nature concept that was originally put in the site plan. And it would be even better because it's actually growing food. So that's what I have to say about that.
That's helpful, thank you. I was just curious because I didn't, I didn't know what that building too was and if that had been looked up. So I appreciate that context. And then the other, one question I still had was, is there any kind of timeline yet for what we will do with the West Wing? Are you sort of waiting for, sort of moving the community closet and the food pantry out, and then that will be the first step in a cascade of events in which the West Wing will get remodeled?
So Miranda, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe our discussion with the fire department in January or earlier this year, they would like to see that move forward sooner than later is the general thing, but not another 10 years. We cannot leave that for another 10 years. I think they said five.
Yeah, so, like, there's no, like, we're not being evicted at any point in time, it's not happening, but they did ask that we make active movement towards ending the use of the West Wing. And so the way in which we want to do that is by adding it into the comprehensive plan update next year, so that we can get funding. That's going to be a big piece. And then also, the comprehensive plan allows us to do the community outreach component of that. Some of the proposals are, of course, to tear down the West Wing, maybe make that parking, and then expand the community center down in this bottom area. There's a lot of proposals out there, so that's not the end-all, be-all. But JVA does have concerns about the drainage that occurs up there, and so we do need to kind of just look at the site as a whole. But yeah, where are we going to go?
So this whole piece, this whole discussion and concept came about in being proactive because it takes a long time to relocate an operation. Like, storage is easy. If we have to, we can rent containers, put things in containers, that's easy. People in an operation that serves the community is way different. So that's why we're being proactive with this.
Yep, thanks. Because clearly, this type of decision will have, you know, a cascade of other implications for the town and for the community center. So it's helpful to see the whole picture, I appreciate that. One other suggestion I was just going to have was when you send this packet to the BOT, which I do fully support, some kind of visual. Because I had the same thing that Roger, I was like, I think, and I looked at it, I was like, okay, they must mean this spot, because it's the only spot that makes sense. But a visual would probably be helpful in the packet as people are doing their homework. But in general, I think it's, sounds like it's definitely something we need to at least consider as a community in terms of a concept plan. So fully support and, you know, I think that the food pantry and the community closet are both important, important assets for this community. So I would hate to see them get disrupted and be relocated too far away. I do like your point, though, as well about, I think the community center space does offer a, with the parking lot is set up, and right now, it does offer people who use that space for those resources, a huge level of convenience versus trying to, you know, be downtown, find parking, walking long distances, the privacy issues, so. Kudos to putting this together and good luck at the BOT.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Stephanie. Jim?
Thank you for bringing this to us, Nicole. I had a few questions. One, I was just wondering why we have such a short suspense, just over three weeks, to give you feedback on this before you have to submit this?
It was, it's because of the grant application, that's all. It opened about two weeks ago for Worthy Cause, and this conversation's been happening, at least it's been happening for a long time, but since I came on board, it's really been high in my priority of finding a place to live or to house us. And when this Worthy Cause, we were on a call with them and we realized, wait a second, we can apply for Worthy Cause grants on a concept, number one. And then it doesn't, we don't have to have anything specific. We don't actually have to own the property either, which was a really neat, we thought that if we applied for Worthy Cause funding, we would have to own the actual property. But no, we actually only have to own the building. So that opened our eyes to this also. And then the timing of this commission meeting and then the Board of Trustees before the applications do, we just really threw as much together as we can to come up with a concept to move forward. And for the Worthy Cause, they'll accept a concept. So as long as we have support behind us with a concept, we can actually apply, which is, it's not really ever heard of that you can apply for a grant with a concept. But for this one, you can, and it happens to fall right under the principles of everything that we want to be doing. It's for being a nonprofit and actually building construction.
Okay, thank you. And I think that certainly the plan itself is good. It's definitely a need that we have in the community. It would be great. I'm assuming that the other building that Don just mentioned, the Magnolia Schoolhouse, was looked at and is not a suitable building? No, okay.
Stone Garage.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's actually too small for what we would need. But we did, we sat in there, we tried to get creative, even unlocked space in it, and it would still be just too small for us.
Okay. And then you kind of answered my question with your previous response there. I wondered if they would accept, basically, a, sounds good, but there's a lot more out there that we have to know before this gets approved. So basically, just that we are interested in pursuing this is enough for you to pursue this grant?
That's it, yep.
Okay.
Absolutely. And you being in support of it helps us move forward with the Board of Trustees' support in it also. So yes, absolutely. To just say that you would support the concept of moving forward to apply for this grant, that would be as much as we would need, at least to back us and give us a little strength in our application.
Okay. And then, just like Stephanie mentioned, man, a rendering would be really nice.
Oh, absolutely.
Something that we could kind of look at and that we, you know, hopefully, before you go, before the BOT, you could come up with something. But I'm in support of this, and I hope it works out with you. It's a little bit of a conflict for me because I'm a little bit later today about to present our parking recommendations, and that area was going to be one of the areas we were going to look at having additional parking we were going to direct people to in town. But this certainly trumps that and helping people with food and clothing in the community, definitely a higher priority. So thank you for putting this together.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jim. We don't have really much more to add, other than the fact that the rendering, I think, is really key, particularly for the Board of Trustees, and I think it will also help your application to have a picture like, I originally wasn't quite sure where the building was going to go, but I knew it wasn't up top. But also, and then, and then I learned that you had mentioned the east-west, so it's good to show that on a plot. And since you have an architect on your committee, I think it would be pretty easy to draw up something to scale, so. And even just to show, you know, I don't know how many parking spots would be lost by this, but it might be worth thinking about that because that question may come up at the Board of Trustees, so.
Absolutely.
And, let's see. Quick, kind of a unrelated question for Don, but when the West Wing gets demolished, what's happening to that? You don't know? Okay.
You'll have to give your feedback in the comprehensive plan, community outreach.
Okay, that was a good segue. Okay, anyway, I think on behalf of the commission, I think we can go ahead and at least throw our support. I don't know if we need to do a vote or anything. Cynthia?
No, I just want to add a couple of things as these questions came up. So within the use groups chart, this would fall under something like commercial industrial uses, including but not limited to small warehouses and storage facilities. It is a no across the board for most every district, and it is a review use in the public zone. Anything in the public zone has to be publicly owned. And then the other question that came up was about setbacks. There are no setbacks for the public zone, just so you know, we just have to abide by the building height. We don't flex that muscle very often, but there are no setbacks at all. We could cover the entire footprint of this property as the town. But in this case, that's not what they're looking to do. And when we talked with them about it and came out to the site with fire department, had Safe Belt on the phone, and had food pantry folks here and their architect, we looked at that space and really talked a lot about the logistics there and utilities and other things like that. So looks like it would fit, and that's about it from zoning.
Cynthia, what's the height limit?
Max height would be 35 feet. That would be allowed for a main structure. And then 25 feet for an accessory structure. So I don't know that they were planning to go to 35 feet. It's backed up, there's a house right there, but the location of it wouldn't necessarily cut solar exposure off, you know, wouldn't really affect any people aside from what Don had mentioned with the folks who are parking their trailers there.
Okay, thanks, Cynthia. Okay, any other final comments or?
Well, I don't know that we should make a motion, and, you know, it sounds like unanimous recommendation of the board, or maybe you're asked, but I thought from your previous things...
Well, that's what I was...
So this is a discussion item, though, so you wouldn't take a form? You can do like a not a four to give them the green light. I mean, you could also move it to an action item and take a vote if you'd like to make it more formal, but, or you can just do a not a four that you support this moving forward to the Board of Trustees. Get your heads nodding. A not a four, are there four heads nodding is the question?
A quick question. Would it provide a stronger level of support if we did move it to an action item before going to the board?
Not necessarily for the board, because the way in which we would write in the aim is that the planning commission provided unanimous support for this project.
And actually, that can go into the, into the minutes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
Oh, yeah, just...
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, so let's do that. If no one else has any other comments, I, again, would like to see the slideshow distributed, and then if anyone has any additional comments, I guess we send them to you, Miranda?
Yeah, that'd be helpful in preparation for... Yeah, so I did already send you the PowerPoint. Do not reply at all. If you have questions, though, Nicole, Katrina, and Don are on that email.
Okay.
Should there be any questions or any comments you'd like to pass on to the Board of Trustees, just be sure I'm added on to that email.
Okay. And thank you again for all your hard work putting this concept together. I know there's been a lot of discussion and, but I hope it goes forward, and thank you again for your efforts.
Thank you for your time, we appreciate it. This is really exciting to think of a possibility, so I appreciate all of your input, so thank you very much.
This would be very transformational for our town, so thank you and good luck.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay.
And I have some cards here if you...
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. All right, moving on to our next discussion item. This is an update on the Keeping Animals Subcommittee. Let's see, who is going to present this? Is this Cynthia? Okay. Is this the same one that's in the packet? Okay. No, I understand.
Yes, correct. Okay, so I am a member of the Keeping Animals Subcommittee along with Commissioner Cornell and Commissioner Giblin, so folks you know. And Miranda Fisher supports. She hasn't been able to attend our meeting, she's super, super, super busy, but she is in support. So, next slide here, this is the Subcommittee Members. And, next slide. So when the BOT originally asked the Planning Commission to consider keeping animals from a zoning perspective, what our group did is we looked at the zoning chapter. So I looked at the zoning chapter for our first agenda and broke out what is pertaining to animals in the zoning chapter. So pretty much, it's kind of three main sections. There's some other little bits and pieces in the zoning chapter, but it's mainly within 16-6 definitions, 1632 use groups, there's a few things, and 1697 chicken hens, next slide. So 16-6, couple of direct mentions, animal hospital, kennel, private horse stables, public horse stables, and then areas that could pertain to animals if, you know, we're looking at things yard and bulk requirements with setbacks, height, lot coverage, fencing, vision clearance area, exterior lighting, performance standards like dust and noise and those kind of things. Next slide. In the use groups, under the agricultural use group section, animal productions allowed via special review use in residential districts, not allowed in other districts, private horse stables, allowed via special review use in the mountain residential only, public horse stables, allowed by SRU and general commercial and public zones only, and outdoor kennels, can't have them anywhere. Next slide. So continuing on, fish hatcheries, we don't have any of those, but they would be allowed via special review use in the industrial and public zones only. Anything in the P-zone, of course, has to be publicly owned, per footnote seven of section 16-32. And then in commercial uses, there's a whole grab bag of commercial uses and one of those, or two of those, animal hospitals and enclosed kennels, and they're kind of in a random grab bag of types of uses that would be allowed by a special review use in the general commercial, neighborhood commercial, and central business district. Next slide. And home occupations, there's one mention of animal hospital prohibition, and that completes everything that's in the zoning chapter except for the next slide, section 16-97, which is chicken hens. Chicken hens weigh the heck in the zoning chapter where you wouldn't be looking for it. I even overlooked it when we first started talking. Chicken hens are an accessory use to residential uses in all zone districts, they're permitted as pet animals if the regulations are met. And the code looks at safety, ventilation, accessibility, sanitation, maintenance, reduction of associated nuisances via the design and size of the chicken house and the location, no roosters, and breeding, selling, and trading chicken hens or offspring as a commercial enterprise, of course, is prohibited. So that's it for the zoning chapter. So when we got together and started talking, it was like, okay, there's not much here. So we kind of looked at this, and then I did some, I did a spreadsheet of other municipalities. Of course, I was looking at their animal chapter. So we weren't really sure if the Board of Trustees was going to release us into the wild to look at chapter seven or constrain us to just chapter 16, because there really wasn't too much. So we had considered suggestions that we would make if we were just limited to chapter 16. We were given the go-ahead. We were given the go-ahead June 21st to look at chapter seven. So, from there, what we would do is we would solicit public feedback from the community. So, we sent out a survey that will be out for a month. We're trying to get as much feedback. For those of you who have been on the Planning Commission and those who've been on the Board, you have certainly seen a lot of letters from folks. So, we, rather than us diving in and wanting to make broad changes with a broadsword, we really wanted to find out, what does the public want? So, we understand how this process is moving forward. We felt that with the parking survey and the Safe Belt survey, that we got a lot of feedback, and that was really beneficial. So, that will be out for a month, that's correct?
It's out until August 19th.
Okay.
You should have all received the link.
Please, fill it out. And the survey looking, you know, we want to get feedback from people who are in town. So, the way it was designed is, are you a resident? Because if you're not, it's nice that you have thoughts, but they're not really pertinent for this consideration. So, that's kind of one of the major pieces before we move forward. And then, bringing in subject matter experts for regulation guidance, I've talked to Abby and Adam over at the Feed Store. They have a ton of animals and have a rescue operation out in Gilpin. When people don't take care of their animals, they end up surrendering them to be an atom. So, they have a little sanctuary out there, but we want to bring in subject matter experts and anyone else that we can find, if we've got beekeepers or other folks who have expertise in animals. We want that. I have taken care of goats and chickens, so I have some experience doing that. And we want to consider appropriate yard sizes for the humane keeping of animals, consider security protection measures, because wildlife is a thing, obviously, as we know, creating regulations that are consistent, concise, easy to find in chapter seven, not section 16-97 chicken hens weigh out the heck in the zoning chapter. Able to be adapted as needed in the future and ensure humane keeping of animals, and honor the desire for sustainability. We understand that food prices have skyrocketed and think that it's reasonable within the code to consider things that could be done. Next slide. And we would make the following suggestions to continue the research and discussion about chapter seven, moving chicken hens into chapter seven, where it should be, in health sanitation and animals. Creating definitions in chapter seven that would be tailored to the type of animals that we want to keep in Netherland. This is where we started with ambiguity with a property about goats, and it's more, it's become more than that, obviously. We want to consider this topic because at the time, the chickens were allowed, I think that it was the understanding of the town and the Planning Commission that that's it. So, horses, llamas, chickens, and your pet animals at home, and that's that. And because we didn't have specificity, we are a statutory town. The attorney looked to the state statutes, they're a lot more permissive, and goats are allowed. That's how we have some goats. So, we want to really consider the type of animals and be very specific and clear about that without having to name every single animal in the kingdom. Considering types of livestock animals, horses, llamas, maybe goats, chickens, maybe ducks, quails, guinea hens, bees. An important thing to point out is that mason bees do a lot more pollination. Pollination is a really, really important thing that we want to keep doing because of colony collapse disorder with bees. It's really important to bring on pollinators any way that we can. So, mason bees don't have to keep a colony, so that's why they can focus on pollination. Animal products, what we talked about being produced, eggs, milk, and honey. We want to avoid the breeding, and we want to avoid slaughter for commercial sale. So, we understand that people may keep chickens, chicken may die, maybe that's your chicken dinner, but on a regular basis, that's not what we're talking about. Next slide. And our next steps. So, creating and distributing the townwide survey that is out to solicit the public feedback, conducting further specific research, pending those survey results. So, once we find out what people are wanting, then we can kind of hone in on what are the specific needs of that type of animal and other considerations, working with subject matter experts such as Abby and Adam and anyone else who will join us, and incorporating and presenting the Subcommittee draft findings and recommendations to the Boards and Commissions. So, that is where we are right now, and we are not meeting during the time we're waiting for the survey, although Roger is raring to go. Roger, do you want to add anything?
Yes.
Did I miss anything?
No, not at all. That was actually very thorough and very succinct. I just want to stress that, well, and I'm, for me, it's the survey and to actually get feedback. Cynthia, you know, brought up this animal, the animal, bees. For all we know, it might not be any, and just us to clarify that, it's chickens, llamas, and horses, you know, might end up what we're with, and then putting in words that say that, and this is it. So, it's basically, as far as I'm concerned, we're on hold until we hear, you know, across what the community says and what those numbers would be. So, in that presentation, when she mentions those animals, we don't really know. It'll be about a month. And are we getting some decent responses?
Let me pull it up while you're talking, and I will tell you.
Okay, but that's, that would be my report, that it's, we're on hold until we actually see the data from the poll.
We're a small little Subcommittee with a mighty heart. So, you know, we're trying to keep it moving forward, but being small has allowed us to communicate a little bit more. On the Solar Subcommittee, we have so many members that, you know, don't reply all and everything, so we can do some work by emails, which is really helpful. But again, we are seeking subject matter experts. So, if anyone knows anyone who's really, really knows a lot of things, join us, please.
I'm going to shock Cynthia and Roger, there are 93 responses as of today.
Whoa.
Pretty good.
Excellent.
We just released this at the end of last week.
Yes.
Wow, excellent.
Yay, townwide surveys.
And you're welcome to forward that to anybody we know in town, right?
Oh, yes, please. We put it on social media as well, but yeah, please distribute it through your networks because it doesn't always get where they need to go, so.
Yes, yes, we want everyone as much feedback as we can, and we made the survey very simple. It's like five questions, and one of them is any extra comments you have, but it's very specific, and we are really looking to take our next steps from what we hear back from the community.
Excellent, excellent.
I guess if I just add one other thing to, actually, there's something we haven't run to the Committee, but there's three members here. You know, I think that in the future, and once we see the response, and some of those questions are like about if we'd see that, oh, yeah, you should be able to raise animals, do that thing, I certainly think that it would be appropriate to actually, you know, bring some of that back to the Planning Commission to get feedback about how some of those specifics will work when it gets kind of dicey. We certainly have the experts, but the idea of, you know, people raising and probably will not be slaughtering because it goes into all kinds of other things, but quote-unquote the term there, which got us all into trouble in the beginning, animal production, you know, and there was no definition, so what's that? So, maybe something like that where people would say that, I think it would be certainly up the staff a little bit in the Committee, but it would be appropriate discussion to bring back at a thing to the Planning Commission.
Right, yeah, I was going to sort of ask what the estimated timeline is or the process after the Subcommittee has a chance to look at the results. And particularly for our new members, it would be helpful maybe for them to know exactly what the next steps are. And, you know, potential timeline of come back to the Commission and then go to the Board. Have you guys thought about that yet?
No, not really, but see, that time, what, once we got together and did the things on the thing, it was really a discussion and, you know, you know, the way Cynthia actually pounds it out, and here it is, comes back the next day, so it might be a push to say September meeting, I would certainly say the October meeting.
For the Commission?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's reasonable, Roger. Because we, I think that's reasonable, because we want to ingest all of that, and then I'm going to be doing a lot of research.
Yeah.
So, and then bringing in other folks so we can really start digging into this conversation. Because again, we were pretty handcuffed to the zoning chapter, as there just wasn't much, so we were like, okay, we're done here.
Yeah, we're done.
Ooh, chicken hen.
And I think, you know, a lot of it would be dependent on the survey, and, you know, if the survey say, oh, yeah, there's a widespread, you know, request of the community to actually, you know, have it, then maybe it would take, you know, maybe a little longer to do it, but I would certainly think October meeting. And if it's, well, it's clear that people want a very limited amount of livestock, then I think our job becomes a little different. You don't have to have as many experts and, you know, so the way I look at it, it'll be tailored per that survey, is the way I feel about it. I think that's what we agree, and that's how we had that whole discussion of that we should not go for unless we hear from the public. It's not right to have four people say this is the way it would be.
I mean, imagine that a topic is polarized in Netherland?
No.
Never happens. But because things get so polarized here and there's a lot of opinions, we really felt strongly, and this was actually Commissioner Cornell, who pushed really hard for this and said, we need to get public feedback before we move forward, because we're seeing so many letters come through, and they are vastly different feelings on different sides.
Yep.
So, we really just want to get as much, I mean, it's great to hear that 93 people have already responded, because these townwide surveys are working really well, and then...
Yeah, but you can sort that out.
As Jim, who will be talking about the parking in our next Subcommittee discussion knows, you know, we've plugged along at all these Boards, presenting, you know, initially what we're looking at, and then moving through different Boards, including the Youth Opportunity Advisory Board. So, I just presented to them on all the Subcommittees, and they were great. They're really engaged, wonderful folks. And so, we visited Sustainability Advisory Board for the parking. We've, you know, we've been plugging away at the Boards, so I think we would just take the same process with this. But we really kind of wanted to get our poop in a group on what the town wants.
So to speak.
So to speak, what the town wants and what direction we're moving in so that we're not making broad changes without a lot of support from the community.
Sure, right. And I know the Subcommittee's done a lot of work on gathering input from other communities, how they handle such in the code, and that's, I think, key as well as molding that with the survey results. Before we go to the Commission for any other comments, is there anyone out in the public that would like to speak? Obviously not here, but online.
I think they're here for the Solar Subcommittee, but Elodie, Erica, if you have any thoughts, feel free to jump in and share them with us.
Okay. Great. All right, so we'll just keep this, you know, general, I won't go around the room, but anyone who has any comments to add to what the Subcommittee has done so far, or if we see anything that's missed, we should bring that up as well, including not bringing killer bees to Netherland.
Murder hornets.
Murder hornets. No, that's the latest.
A wild field of murder hornets.
I think it's too cold up here for killer bees, so we're safe.
Climate change is working its way fast, so you never know. My 10-year plan.
That's a joke for the minute.
Yes, that's a joke, thank you. I did have a question. Thank you for the survey. I did take it. It was very short, very easy. When does it close again?
Friday, August 19th.
Friday, August, okay, this is up for a couple more weeks, basically, a month. Okay, good to know. And then my other question, because I remember we talked about this last time when it first came up, was, you know, obviously, we're not the first community in the world to have to deal with this. And so, have you guys started yet looking at what other towns are doing? Because I think that this question of, you know, do we need a subject matter expert for every species versus, a lot of towns have already written codes like this. I remember we looked at some of ones around Colorado, we looked at some ones in other parts of the country as well with different climatologies, obviously, but there might be, it'd be nice to see a summary from that and see how it aligns with our subject matter experts.
Well, should I try very briefly, as Cynthia actually mentioned in her presentation, when she said she brought out that whole spreadsheet, that's what that was. And I did want to comment, though, so I think we've looked at Crested Butte, Buena Vista, Granby, Lyons, Golden. Actually, it's amazing how different they are, and they're just kind of hit and miss. They actually are not, in my opinion, from reading them. Crested Butte was the best one. If you ever wanted to Google Crested Butte, get specifics, but it's, they're very brief, you know, one page, a page and a half, and they all are kind of different. They focus on this, and some, most places actually, like Granby and stuff, just allow, you know, allow livestock in different areas. Lyons does too, but it's in the agricultural zone districts. And so, you know, so they don't really have anything, so example, they didn't really have a good specific guidelines, well, here's something that we could use here in Netherland. It's just that livestock's in agricultural districts, and that's what, that was it.
Yeah. Well, just out of curiosity, a follow-on to Stephanie's question, are there, how do they handle, like, all of the, all of the animals? Do they, they group them? Do they...
They get the specific six, seven, five that they allow. So, they mention these are the ones that are allowed, is what they do. So, it's not carte blanche and anything else.
And I remember seeing some, when we talked last time, where it was, they almost had like this algorithm, right, where it was sort of, here's your lot size, here's the animal type, and here's how many you're allowed to have, right?
Exactly.
And so, there were some, and, you know, so two cows is not equal two bunnies, right?
That was the exact same thing that you saw in the example they gave that day about the Boulder County one.
Right.
So, absolutely, there should be numbers and lots and space.
And what we did, looking at these different towns, I always put the population, so we can look for populations that are small like ours, and also elevations. So, I include that because those are important concepts for us up here. And as Roger said, Buena Vista, Crested Butte, Granby, Golden, Lyons, and then I also included Town of Netherland in this, so you could kind of compare what we have against what others have. And a lot of times, I mean, the codes are fairly straightforward, but a lot of times I was digging through their codes to fit my categories of the types of animals allowed, the minimum area required if they mentioned that, the residential zones allowed if it was pertinent, and any other code considerations. And we were sticking with these towns that are around Netherland size and at elevation. When you start to look at bigger towns, they're going to start to get into that weird algorithm, and then when you start to look at towns down south, you're going to have more agricultural towns, and that's not really kind of what we're looking at. So, we're really trying to consider, you know, urban rural agriculture animals at altitude.
So, Stephanie, in my mind, I, so I, I got a whole lot of this, these little things have been bookmarked in my brain about, you know, these different examples, but I actually feel like I'm in a holding pattern until I actually hear. So, I'm not going to sit here and worry about goats or this animal or pygmy pigs until I actually see that. From the survey, you know, I see, hey, there's a whole lot of people that want this, and if, you know, people don't want this, then, you know, we just don't go there. So, I'm absolutely on hold to see what happens.
Right.
And that's where it is, but yeah, there's, there's a lot of examples, but boy, they're, it's like throwing darts at a dartboard, so I think it's a wonderful opportunity to tailor this. Our chicken ordinance is actually the best ordinance that you can read of all these ones. There's, there's nothing like that. I mean, it's only that big, but it actually, it actually shows what's, what's available, you know, what you should do, except for it doesn't give a number, a number that, a limit. You know, it talks about square footage and hen houses, but anyhow, you know, I think that we just have to be on hold, and we mentioned when we do it, we certainly should report to you guys if there's time on the agenda in August, because we would certainly meet. So, we'll give you a progress report at the August meeting, because we'll certainly have a better time, and if nothing more, report what the survey said.
Yep. No, I was going to actually suggest that, that's a good, good idea.
And as staff, we just want clear regulations that we can follow, that are pretty straightforward.
Yep.
Not subjective. I'm not having to make a determination for somebody about something. They're very clear and followed through for everybody. We understand that the work that we're doing now may change in a few years.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm a vegan, but people may want to keep meat rabbits. It's a very sustainable way to have white meat. Because they replenish themselves. I'm not a fan of the slaughter piece, but you know, we understand that, you know, the work that we're doing now is to, to get us through the next years. And hopefully, you know, in, in the future, if people desire other changes, it can be adapted and they can work from there. But we could...
We have to start somewhere.
We got to start somewhere and we have to remove the ambiguity that kind of got us into a bit of a Nettlesome thing. And obviously there are very strong opinions, so we want to make the best regulations that we can with the best feedback that we get from everybody.
Good. Thank you.
Good luck. Thanks, guys.
I had a couple of questions. I, I wonder, uh, you know, as, as was mentioned, there was lots of letters and there seemed to be like concern to the level of this being an emergency for treatment of the animals from reading those letters. They were asking for immediate action in most of the letters I read. I, I'm curious if we're looking at this being all the way into October, November, by the time it goes to the BOT, uh, to possibly make the code changes. They were asking for something that was going to be much quicker. Has the situation that arose that caused the many, many letters and the extreme concern from some neighbors resolved itself? Is that, is that no longer an issue? What's going on with that?
I wouldn't say it's no longer an issue. And Cynthia actually spent quite a bit of time on that situation today. We do have some code violations that we're exploring, um, as well as just general animal health and safety. And so there's a lot of different entities involved between our own team, code enforcement, law enforcement, the state of Colorado, CDPHG, Boulder County Public Health. So there's quite a few organizations that are assessing. There's a lot going on with this property and above and beyond animals. So there are a lot of people involved trying to assess just the health of and well-being of the whole situation. So I realize that's very vague, but that's where we'll leave that.
So, so there's not going to be any plan for some kind of, uh, emergency action by the board to try and resolve this?
The board trustees have decided that they do not want to target. That was very big for this situation is while it came forward, maybe because of one home, they're not trying to target one home. They'd like us to work through that administratively, what's going on with this property. We did ask the board trustees if they wanted to consider a moratorium on any animal besides what's listed in code and they opted not to.
And that was you? I don't think that was our committee. I agree with you in...
It was at the BOT level, correct.
At our meeting at the BOT level, I think they specifically directed us to work on the code and not, and to not, not to
To leave them, yeah.
Add to our pros or cons. So yeah, we're supposed to actually work on a general code. And you're right, though, that they could have made emergency action or done something, but yeah, that, so that's not this committee.
I think the sentiment too was to think this through carefully, take your time, make sure we get it right, rather than try to keep patching something together, correct?
Right. And health and safety and well-being of animals had to be centered to it. That's why a lot of the board didn't like Boulder County's structure. They didn't like animals being considered as units. They wanted it to really focus on what is going to be best for the animal itself. And so that's also kind of a task of the subcommittee is when considering zoning, you're taking into consideration what animals need, especially when they start to get into the discussion about those lot sizes or things like that, um, what does each animal type need?
Do you feel like the folks that were very impassioned in their letters feel like action is being taken to protect the animals they were concerned about right now? Are they satisfied?
No.
They are not satisfied?
No.
No, okay. All right. And then my other question was, uh, man, I don't know how many species of animal there are out there, but for us to get it all in the code, it would be a lot. Is it a lot easier for us to write, uh, the code in such ways? And I actually already thought it was that way, to say XYZ are allowed, everything else is excluded, as opposed to we're going to list that you can't have, you know, lions and snakes and lemurs and cobras and, and all this other stuff?
Oh, cool.
Yeah, you're right. And I addressed that. I thought in my statement, that's what I said. We will list, you know, the five, six, whatever it is. It could just be three that we already have right now. You list these three, these are allowed.
So the issue right now is that we, the code references domestic animals, but there's no definition for that. Therefore, we turn to state statute. Under state statute, domestic livestock is listed under the domestic animal definition. Under a domestic livestock definition is where you find the goats and the pigs and those things. So it's really the failure to define, which is what Cynthia was talking about, that creates us to naturally turn to state statute to get clarification.
Couldn't it be, the rest is under SRU, like reviewed by the board?
If that's a desire, yeah. I mean, you could do that where it's domestic animal under that definition that becomes necessary.
These are allowed and then if any others have to be go under review?
Yeah. Yeah, you very well could make that recommendation. Yeah, thank you.
Right now, you're the unit of the animal kingdom.
Right now in chapter seven, it says pet animal is defined for the purposes of this article as any dog, cat, bird, rabbit, guinea pig, hamster, mouse, snake, iguana, turtle, chicken, hen, or any other species of domestic animal. So that's where the vagueness comes in on that definition. And any other species of domestic animal is quite a lot of things. So, um, that's what we'd be looking at tearing apart and being very, 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 did I say very clear about the definitions and the animals?
And that under, that actually was under the pet section. And, you know, there's really nothing under the livestock other than there's two animals. So yeah, there's the pets and there's the livestock quite often. Then you, when you read the other ones, then they, then they go into dogs. It ended up being, you know, the vast majority of all the codes are actually dogs and dog control and dog barking. So...
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. I did want you to know that my next door neighbor was the guy who had the pet lemur, who, uh, he's not there anymore, who, who bit somebody. And, and it almost sounds to me like with, if the code there, he was, you know, cited for that. But it almost sounds like if he would have fought that, he might actually come back and won. This seems like a very good, uh, lesson for us to be extremely specific and thoughtful about how we write code. One line there at the end, uh, really leaves us open to this whole mess.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments or direction to the subcommittee or?
I just had a couple of questions. And is some of this is the kind of process? Like I, if the survey comes back on the 19th, our next meeting is the 24th. When, when's the next subcommittee meeting? When are you all getting together to kind of review? Do you know?
I'd say sometime, a day or two after. I, I would say that we all, the way we always be, we would probably be meeting in person or on the phone with, within a day or two. Certainly to get ideas of where are we going to go, you know, to rehash it and do it. So yeah, we, yeah, we've all been responsive to that.
Yeah. And then we can, you know, maybe bring some initial feedback to that, uh, August meeting and just sort of give a little bit of feedback on what we're seeing from the survey results. But obviously, uh, we won't have, have really dug into the discussion of the research quite yet.
But just an update, I think would be great. Perfect.
And then process wise, so you, you guys meet and then we have, okay, for instance, what if the survey comes back and people want to allow all kinds of things? And then, you know, we've got to now consider what are the implications? Does that mean that then you have your recommendation comes before us and then the board? And then does it go back to, does it still, is there still going to be a process where we're defining what the code changes would be? Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, we would be, you know, presenting draft findings to boards. And then when we come back to the planning commission, sort of officially, like, once we've really dug into, okay, this is sort of our, what our draft presentation is, we, we would be presenting to you guys.
A draft ordinance.
Right.
A draft ordinance, exactly.
Yeah, that's what I felt like possibly September would be a tight one, but certainly October would be a draft ordinance that you could say make changes and say hopefully within review, you can actually even make a motion to approve with just these few small changes. You know, and pass it on to the board of trustees for their meeting. Yeah, we'll see. I'll hash out. Let's get the survey first.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Um, and then the only other thing I was going to add, uh, this may be more from Miranda's. I liked the survey. One of the things I embarrass, say, I don't know the nickname of my, my area of town. And the other thing is I know there's probably a lot of people who are filling in the survey and they don't know the zoning. They don't know what's central business or commercial and, and property. And then, you know, maybe at the bottom, we could have just a town map that has sort of the areas, the regions with the nicknames. And then that way you almost can force the user to select from a list.
Yeah.
And that way it's less free form because one of the things I'd be curious about is, is the opinion differ for more centrally town-located people rather than, you know, Old Town or, you know, Sunnyside or, or, you know,
This will change.
Big Springs.
To change our, our survey. But if we, a, a map would be okay, but what if we just said, you know, street, wouldn't have to be street number, but just street might appear.
If I modified it now, I mean, I can add the map at this point, but modifying the question would really skew your, skew your results.
Yeah, you could put a link to the map.
I do expect this being one of many surveys because, you know, originally I had tossed out some of those more zoning questions and, and the subcommittee, really the desire was to kind of keep it broad. And then I think there will be a lot more times where we're going to want to see public input.
Yeah, I just think regional, regional opinions, not a big region, but I would imagine they, you know, differ that, pretty large when you're more out in the rural area of town rather than more in town. So I just think that might be interesting to see in future surveys.
What subdivision is he living? Up on the hill.
Up on the hill.
They're up on the hill division.
We're up on the hill. Yes. Yes.
Bridge Street.
I think so. I just say up on the hill.
Not over the hill.
No, just up on the hill. Um, I have a question on the, I don't know if this goes to the police department or if it goes to the ordinance about a working dog and what would be considered allowed to be barking as opposed to a dog that is not allowed to bark? I can, I know there was a lot of questions on that.
So Chief Fine Levin did weigh in on that and it's going to take me a minute to find her answer. I may have to, I can send it to the planning commission. It may take me a little bit of time.
Well, the real answer is that, well, certainly we will certainly weigh into it. But at that, at the board meeting that night, because that kind of came up too. And they said, you know, let's just get the police working on that. She'd already had done some draft and working on that. So she was actually going to work on that ordinance. But it certainly, and that we would want to piggyback to make sure that it's in there. But hopefully theoretically, they're working on it as we speak.
That was actually kind of my, led from one of the questions I was thinking is if people are pro, a deterrent from actually having livestock would be to still enforce noise ordinances in the CBD, the NC or the GC just because you're in town, you're near, you're close proximity to other homes. Noise ordinances like should be enforced, I think personally. Whether you have livestock or not, you know what I mean? I don't know. That's the way I, I would look at it.
Yeah, sorry. We talk quite a bit at the board trustees about the noise ordinance and it plans, it's going to go back to the board for, for the review. Currently, trustee Coombs' mouth feels like it's far too vague. Our police department would feel similarly. There's not enough in the code that really gives you enforcement over it. You know, even if you had a permit, the enforcement is very, um, vague. It's really, it doesn't have any sort of repercussions. It's kind of like a shame on you, you won't get a permit in the future. So that's a challenge and that's a big challenge for Chief Fine Levin because she doesn't feel like she has the ability to enforce the code, um, as it stands. And, you know, outside of a decibel reading and knowing that someone went over and being able to violate there, it, it just is far too open-ended, similar to keeping animals. I mean, it's just our code altogether just creates a lot of complexity when it comes to enforcement.
It was funny that at the, um, at our multi-board get-together at Chapeeta, in our group discussion, I think, and I forget his name, Nick maybe, somebody from the SAB. He, um, recently moved to town and he read in the code that you need a dog license. So he went down to the police department to get a dog license and they looked at him kind of like a deer in the headlights. Like, what are you talking about? But then they, uh, found it. They issued dog license five, six and seven. So, and I thought we had more dogs than seven in town, but apparently not. But anyway, it's, it's another issue of, of not just enforcing the code, but knowing it. So anyway, just a curious, so anything else? Will we move on? Okay. Let's go to tell you, I was going to suggest taking a five-minute break and, um, reconvene here. No later than quarter after. And, uh, and then you guys are on deck.
And so when I bought my house.
And so when I bought my house. I can see me and mine have a major difference. Yeah, we have friends. You know, so.
It's so true. It was hard to check this out. The kids are like, I don't. Why did Evan Spence say you got next to the earth? Yes, I've always been there, I'm just honest. They're like, yeah, see, you got next to the earth. I didn't have my newspaper. He said, well, what's your project information? I go, we're here. And like, kids, like, they don't talk something else. That's just weird if you start talking to somebody. I'm like, I'm like, yeah.
You don't talk pretty well.
Oh, I, I was. I know Barry was trying to have this video. You know, and that's, that was taken for like, some, some stuff. They were booster?
Yeah.
And see, first. Why, I'm also, I'm texting, very interesting. Yeah. I might have to invest in both of them. I asked for a video. Yeah, I'm curious. I mean, I think it would improve what I have, you know, because I have, if I forgot my house myself, it could be a bit better. Uh, but the fact that I. I was never going to do anything with anybody. It's one of the reasons why a lot of people do. Yeah, I'm out of my. What's that? It's called. But like, I like that. I, I. I. You know, I miss, you know, when you have. Advert to all. Think I can say, you know, we left first because we wanted to spot any of these. You know, it's never going to occur when you're.
Good. But exactly.
More like the social, you're like, you're here and these other people are in the meeting. Yeah. And that doesn't happen, but, you know, I. Some needs to be. That I hate. Somewhere. No matter what I want. What I want is. Because. What, I'm getting a lot of stimulation. Like Miranda, she does all these meetings and it's like, you didn't sleep last night? Get like some. I don't, she does, and she does a lot more meetings than I do. Whereas like, I. They're drunk.
Yeah, I live. I live. Cynthia, I'm coming, I'm coming in. But I.
Should we steal?
Yes, we are good. So close. You could move one closer to Roger.
All right, all logistical. Okay, shall we reconvene? Yeah, thank you. Okay, call the meeting back to order. Are you ready, Cynthia? Okay, our next discussion item is the parking in Netherlands Subcommittee Recommendations. And I don't know, you're going to present, um, and then Linda, you, okay, go ahead, Jim.
Hey, uh, Mr. Murray's word. Sir, myself, Cynthia. Subcommittee, study parking. Together. Should 2009 hard expanding. Chiefs for on the. Team, parking survey. It's a good thing. So. Four main recommendations. Parking on parking in the central business district. Personal parking lots, in-house signage and walkability. First recommendation, moratorium. All the information came out of, where did you think that? This is in all of the B T meetings.
I am sorry, thank you very much. Sorry about that. Yes, and so, uh, the first recommendation for the, uh, parking subcommittee would be a moratorium on parking in the central bus, business district. And from feedback that I've heard both from the B O T and previous meetings, uh, that basically the, they didn't feel like that the parking fund was equally enforced. That that was something that many people, in fact, most people come before the B O T and ask for, uh, a waiver on, on those, and they've been granted a lot. And so one of the things that we, uh, wanted to recommend for the Commercial Parking Fund was a two-year moratorium on all payments in the Central Business District. Uh, and any type of requirements for off-street parking with the exception of ADA spaces. Those must be, continue to be planned for. But the main reason for that is if you've had any experience trying to approve packets for the Central Business District, there's just not any room. Uh, there's no place, you can't just pull parking, you know, out of thin air. And so, uh, we looked at this more of a problem that the whole, you know, we had to look at a whole community solution and for the town to kind of work in partnership with businesses, uh, to try and solve this issue. So, uh, that was the first recommendation. Uh, uh, and I, I kind of got ahead of myself a little bit and say that we have had, man, I don't know, we must have had about six, seven meetings on this. And then I have presented this, uh, personally to the D D A, uh, to the B O T. And then when we had our all-board gathering, I got a chance to bend some ears on this topic. Um, but I think universally people are, realize that this is an issue that we need to tackle. And I think by the end of this presentation, you'll see that there's some concrete things, uh, that we can do. My goal with this, with the simple four and Linda's and, and our whole subcommittee, not, not, it wasn't just me, uh, was to give some implementable, you know, some, some actually achievable goals that we could actually move on and, and get, uh, completed. You know, there's always a discussion about how we could do this or that, or what about the $5 million parking garage and all these things. But, uh, this, the goal of this was to give the Board of, uh, Trustees some recommendations that they could actually move forward with. Our, our second recommendation was to develop additional lots in town. And, uh, you'll find right behind that, uh, slide that there's a map that shows a lot of places in town that we considered. Uh, initially, the main things that, uh, we were looking at was the Old Town Shop Site, that is town-owned property. And, uh, as, we're looking at areas within walking distance of, of the Central Business District. Uh, and then over on Lakeview Drive, from, uh, Rodeo Court to the end was going to be a, a, and I don't have a pointer, I could point up there, but you could see the long oval cigar shape there, uh, on the map that, uh, goes all the way, we own that property, that goes all the way down to the end of Rodeo Court. Thank you, that helps very much. Uh, and so those are two areas where the town, on either end of town, within 10 minutes' walk of the Central Business District, that we could look at possibly creating parking. And I believe we have the ability to do that within our own town, uh, infrastructure. We have the Public Works, uh, team that has experience, they have the paving equipment, and they have had some opportunity to learn how to use it, uh, most recently over on Big Springs, extending that out. And so, uh, the goal is to try and to, and, and you'll see why here in a minute, to try and give people opportunities to park a, and within a close walking distance of town. Uh, but to expand that parking, especially for when we have events, uh, you know, everybody knows when we have frozen dead guy days, or if we ever get a chance to bring back, uh, you know, Ned Fest and some other, uh, events, that we do not have the capacity currently in town. Uh, there's many other, uh, spots, you know, the, one of the things that kind of got, uh, you know, spoken for before, you know, that I was pushing hard for was the Fisherman's Lot. And after I presented to the B O T, they actually told me, well, they're going to conserve some of that, but the parking area, it might still be up for grabs to, to be able to develop that part of the parking area as long as we can keep the wetlands portion that, uh, you know, borders the creek and the trail there that goes along. Um, there's also, you know, I'm not going to try and go through all of them, uh, but one of the other areas we were looking at was the, uh, where they talked about putting, you know, to try and, uh, uh, when we get to the signage part, try and direct people to park here at the community center. One of the spots that we were looking at was this area that's underutilized, right where we're talking about putting the new, uh, food pantry and clothing closet building. Uh, but, you know, there's always going to be competing priorities. There's been lots and lots of discussion, obviously, there's a parking study that goes back to 2009, and I don't think we've made any significant strides as a community to develop any parking. Uh, so my, my recommendations, you know, is, is at least let's start with something. If we could start with, with Rodeo Court, uh, that, that on Lakeview down to, from, from Rodeo Court down to the end and, you know, potentially the Town Shop Site and just get two spots in town. Uh, and, and I think I was told by, uh, that it was as many as 65 spots down, uh, at, at the Old Town Shop Site that we would gain, and then potentially we would gain as many as 80 parking diagonally. Uh, you know, if we'd have built up the road that's closest to the reservoir there and made some additional diagonal parking on Lakeview Drive. That in itself would be two, a huge number that we would be able to incorporate. Uh, the main thing with the Town Shop Site, the main pushback, and I got some, uh, feedback from Billy Giblin, uh, who's on the, let's see, the Peak to Peak Housing and Human Services Subcommittee, that they have that earmarked and they really want to use that for affordable housing. That's great, that's awesome. Putting a parking lot there does not preclude being able to use that at a later time when the funds come available to be able to develop that. In the meantime, if we could develop that in the next 12 to 18 months, we actually have something that's a resource that could be used. Part of the reason we're looking at pushing that, those public parking out, uh, is, well, I'll, I'll get to that here in just a second. The, and, and Linda, if you have anything to add, just jump in, okay. Uh, the third recommendation was going to be wayfinding, signage, and walkability. And, uh, you know, wayfinding, uh, basically we're talking about putting up signage to direct people where it is. Some of the concepts we talked about was having some kind of a board right there at the visitor center that has a little map, you know, kind of like what you see at Waterworld. You are here, uh, here's where the parking areas are in town. Oh, by the way, here's the little, uh, Q R code for you to scan on your phone that can take you directly right to these, uh, available free parking spots. Uh, signage, I think, is definitely something that would help direct people. I think if you're a stranger to this town and you're driving around trying to figure out where you can park on a busy, and when there's a busy event going on, or the, you know, the, the farmer's market's going or something like that, you don't really know which direction to even head. You know, I don't think most people even know about, you know, who, if you're not from town, would you even know that the community center parking lot is available for you? You know, I, I, I've heard many people talk about, uh, the bank parking is supposed to be the parking for Crosscut. Boy, I don't see much Crosscut traffic parking over in the bank parking, because I don't see a sign over at Crosscut or over on First Street that says, hey, you know, here, right over here, you know, just, just a half a block away is free parking for you. Um, and then the, uh, trails, trail and walkability, what we would develop, uh, from those lots, clear, you know, nice, you know, you know, a- as I said, 10-minute walk from the Town Shop Site to the Central Business District, from the Rodeo Court to, uh, to Lakeview Area all the way down, about a 10-minute walk. Community Center, about a 10-minute walk. So everything we would want to do is, uh, try to, one, show people where the parking is. Uh, you know, develop, develop those lots first, of course, a little bit more. Uh, and then ha- have a way for them to get there and have a nice little scenic walk as they're going down. Um, and then our last recommendation was for paid parking, to phase in paid parking. And surprisingly, from the parking survey, I mean, we, we heard locals don't want to pay for parking. That was the main thing. And we heard business owners say, man, we need turnover on First Street in front of our businesses because people come and they park there for hours, sometimes all day, and tie up valuable spots for me and my business. Uh, sometimes I, I heard a lot of complaints that employees park there. I, I'd be kind of surprised, I wouldn't be a very good employee, but, uh, if I was a business owner, I'd make sure my, my employees weren't parking there. But there's just, uh, we counted out 25 spots just on, on First Street there. Uh, the main, right in front of the old P I, uh, that we could have. And Tom, let's see, I wrote this down, Mahold, Mayor Pro Tem, uh, happened to, when I presented this to V O T, happened to have gone to a three-day survey, uh, a three-day parking symposium. And one of the things that Cynthia and our subcommittee was having a hard time was figuring out how to come up with an estimate, how much money, how much revenue could be brought in per meter. Luckily, Tom, our Mayor Pro Tem, had a solution for that. He said, you know, we, the, the, the ongoing rate is $80,000 per meter per year. 25 spots at $80,000 a year is $2 million that we could bring in in revenue just from putting parking on, on, uh, First Street there. And so I, I just don't believe that anybody who expects to step out of their car and walk right into a business expects not to have to pay for parking anymore. You know, those days are gone, you can't go down to Pearl Street, can't go to Idaho Springs, you can't go to most towns and be right there and have convenience of being close without paying for it. You know, if you want, uh, free parking, you get to walk 10 minutes.
And I think that was part of our discussion as well, is if you want free parking, you may have to walk a little bit, but with the paid parking, people were not opposed to it that I've spoken with. People are more enthusiastic about it. And, um, we also would be thinking about putting a little, if this went through, to fill up the R T D parking lot and just put some signage saying, if you want free parking, we'll fill up the R T D parking lot. And possibly R T D would go onboard with a, a garage then, so that we have more parking.
Part of the issue with R T D is when the town has approached them about putting a parking garage there, they say it's, it's underutilized, we don't ever see it full. So as an adjunct to this, we want to support everyone parking at the R T D all the time. As much as you can, and I told the Nodded Root folks, like, they use the, the back of the Presbyterian Church, and I said, tell them to park at R T D, like, we want to see it parked out and as much as we can.
And that's closer.
Yes, exactly, and they said, great, we will absolutely tell people that, we will, we will, we will park that place out. And I'm like, great, please do it, we want to see that be utilized.
And that was part of our discussion, is to try to get that lot full.
Well, about the only time I've seen that lot full was when the Hesse, um, shuttle used to run from there. They'd fill it up, but then people were complaining they wanted to take the bus, that they were, it was full, so it's a catch 22.
Well, in- interestingly enough, that would spur, and thank you for bringing that up. Uh, you know, that goes along with that signage and, and wayfinding, that we would be able to, uh, you know, direct people to these, to these spots that are close by. You know, sometimes people are driving around and, and you hear a lot of complaints from people, hey, they're parking in my neighborhood, they're parking in front of my house, and, you know, they're parking all the way down First Street to the, uh, teen center there, you know. Well, if they had some other options and knew where to go, I think that would change. Um, and, and then the other thing was, you know, as Miranda had told us in the, in the subcommittee, uh, meetings that we were having, was that, man, if that then turned out to be utilized fully and some grant dollars came down the pike, you know, maybe some magic infrastructure bill that's out there, uh, maybe R T D would be willing to partner with the town, and there could be some other grant opportunities, and we could ma- maybe that. grant opportunities and we could, maybe that parking garage could be a reality. But what I'm talking about is things that could be implemented in the next 12 to 18 months. Things that are concrete things that we can offer to the BOT, so that we don't have more meetings and more discussions, and more meetings and more discussions, and never actually get anything done. So the next phase would of the, phase two of the parking, paid parking would be the visitor's center parking lot in front of Town Hall. And I have not counted how many spots there are there, but I'm sure there's at least 25. So if you now start talking about right there in the central business district where you can walk two minutes to be at your spot, people go ahead and start paying, and you can start bringing in $4 million a year, now we can really get serious about all these other lots that have been identified on the, on the map, where we would have to go and procure property and possibly buy things, or after a few years, possibly have some money and revenue to purchase and to go forward towards this parking garage idea. You know, maybe we would bring something more to the table as opposed to, you know, hey, you know, we're a strapped community, we don't have anything. And I think from the presentations, oh, the other thing I forgot to say was, you know, the DDA, they want to spend money on and figure out this parking. They have, so we have a funding source right now for these two smaller projects at least, you know. So they have funds available that I'm not, you know, they haven't said that they are going to commit money to this. But basically, they said, hey, this sounds good. When I present them, you know, we'd like to hear more. And if the BOT votes on this, you know, yes, I think we could be in partnership for this. So we have the funds, and we have the ability within town to actually start making a dent to possibly get as many as, you know, 120 to 150 parking spots in the next 12 to 18 months.
Yeah, so the DDA actually already committed funding to wayfinding. And so that is a project that they're tackling in a phased approach. But actually, new development is that the DDA did identify that they would do a financial commitment in their 2023 budget to continue what is being recommended here, and actually implement the development of parking. So recommendation number two, as well as recommendation number four, in doing paid parking. And then I think you all know Ron Mitchell has a desire to do paid parking on his lots, and he'd like to do it collaboratively with the town so that there's some sort of uniformity amongst all the lots.
Thank you. And so then the feedback from the other boards, I'm not going to go through all of these. People had different things, you know, with the paid parking, overwhelmingly, people wanted to have, I heard, how about locals free? You know, in my opinion, if you're a local, you should be willing to walk 10 minutes. You know, you should want to help the community, and you should want this revenue to come in to our coffers. But universally, the BOT was talking about a 30-minute free, you know, first 30 minutes, 15 to 30 minutes free. So you could run in and get something, you could go in and get something at the deli or whatever, and leave, you know. So, you know, basically, and I started getting questions about, oh, how would you do it? How would the kiosk work? How about this? And I said, man, I'm not going to tell you how to skin the cat. I'm going to give you these broad overview recommendations, and then somebody else who has the expertise in that can come in and figure out the planning on it. There's always going to be pushback to new ideas and change. People do not like change. I do not like change. They don't want change. They want our town to stay the same. But the one thing that is a constant in our world is change. You have to adapt. And so, you know, if anybody here remembers the feedback from the community on the Tunxton Village project, man, you'd have thought it was going to be the death of our town. We're going to bring in all these criminals and welfare types and the speeding up and downs, you know, it's going to be horrible. And, you know, and I'm going to tell you, I think that's been one of the best additions to our community. And I mean, at least got, I think they ended up with 26 units over there, right? Yeah, so 26 new affordable housing units in our community. I haven't seen a negative impact. I'm down at the Presbyterian Church, a couple doors down from them all the time. I haven't seen people speeding down the street and making a problem. I haven't seen, you know, I was just over helping move a senior into that building a couple of weeks ago. Outstanding. It's nicer than the apartment that my wife has to rent down in Thornton. You know, the building is beautiful. It was a great project for our community. So when the naysayers come out, and when two dozen people come out and want to stop progress in our community, I say to folks, we've got to have fortitude. We've got to make the hard decisions, and we've got to be willing to accept the criticism and still move forward with plans to move our community forward. I did want to say that Billy Giblin made sure to, I think I mentioned it already, send an email saying that he's actively working for a plan for affordable housing at the Old Town Shop. The proposal and design should be available within one year. I'm going to say that we could actually have parking there within one year to 18 months. There's not going to be funding available for that project in one year. So I hope that the Planning Commission will say, yes, I think this is a good idea. We should go forward with this recommendations to the BOT. And I am very hopeful that the BOT is going to actually take action on this sooner rather than later. Thank you. And I'll entertain your questions or any feedback or comments that Linda has to.
I think you covered most of what we were discussing. One other place which we didn't talk about very much was behind the Quick Mart, to utilize that space a little bit better, because that would open up some more parking there.
The intention here was simple, digestible, implementable, and each one leads to another. So as you look, the first one was necessarily out of the fact that staff was not able to enforce the code as it's written, because the BOT was writing waivers. And then everything sort of follows, developing additional lots, having wayfinding signage and walkability is a huge piece, especially if we want to encourage people to walk a little farther out. And that leverages the ability to do the paid parking, because it would be phased in, so it wouldn't be right away. And we talked about this 15 to 30 minute. I talked to someone from Idaho Springs when they implemented their parking. That's what they did. Initially, they said that helped ease the pill for folks. And I know I've driven to Idaho Springs and had to use the restroom and like, do I have to pay for parking? How's this work? And they had like a 30-minute free. That was really helpful. But I think it would be a big service for the business owners. And as much as I don't want to pay for parking, I think it makes financial sense. And in terms of encouraging that turnover, that's just not happening down there. But each one leads to the other, to make the case of, okay, paid parking. And if you don't want to pay, then take a walk across this beautiful town that you're visiting and check it out. And if you live here, open your eyes and remind yourself of why you live here. I think it's, you know, when things get stressful and we kind of lose sight of that, but, you know, when you take a walk around town, you remember how special this place is. And, you know, hopefully, that would also funnel business to other businesses that people are not going to, because they go to their select businesses, rather than walking around the town and getting to see it.
So, quick question. What's the status of the plan for the visitor's center parking lot? There was talk about putting in some charging stations and, you know, the town staff having to park somewhere else and all of that is, what is the status of that, you know?
So the, so we reached some, we had some delays because of Excel, but we are kind of full steam ahead. So we're going to go out to bid for a contractor this fall with plan to complete, begin and complete construction by fall of 2023. And so what that is, is it's actually removing the parking spaces in front of the visitor's center in order to create, or excuse me, Town Hall, in order to create a loading zone, redoing the sidewalks all the way from RTD down to First Street. But a new interesting development is actually on Jackson, there's a private owner who's willing to give us his land so that we can develop 12, 20 parking spaces across the street from RTD. So that's great, because it makes up for what we lost and then some. And then also, we're looking with the DDA to develop parking on First Street as you're heading towards RTD on the south side. And that's about another 15, 20 parking spaces. So that all should be done within about a year, a little over a year from now.
Okay, so it is moving ahead.
Which one? So the one, the one parking, so it's on the south side of First Street as you're heading towards RTD. So in front of like NetterNet, across the street from Kathmandu. But right now, it's like, people do parallel parking. If you made that perpendicular parking, you can really maximize the space.
I think signage is going to go a long way. I'm sorry, go ahead, Stephanie.
Yeah, I had one question that I didn't see. We talked a lot about parking lots. I'm kind of curious to know if there was any attempt to try and count or figure out what it takes to do side street parking. So for example, as you're like in front of Tunxton Village, in front of the RTD, when the RTD does fill up, right, that's where people start to park, is basically along the street. And there's no sign that says you can't. But the way, the way the edge of the road works, the way it dips down into that ditch there, it's not really developed for that purpose. And then we have in front of the Catholic Church as you leave town, again, no signs saying that you can't, no signs encouraging you to either. And then thinking about where the pavement ends, the dirt begins, the RTD bus stop there, et cetera. But have we tried to add in what that would look like? Is this something that we want, given that for most of those zones, there's 25 mile per hour speed limit, it's not like you're parking alongside a highway. Same time, you park over there, there isn't a sidewalk, save from like the Catholic Church back into town. You have to kind of walk along the road with the bus and with the cars and stuff. So have we tried to count how many spaces we would get if we spent some time or energy or money reinforcing that into parking lines, advertising it as parking with a parking sign, paint, whatever that would take?
I think with in front of the Catholic Church, because that's a state highway, or that would limit us to do anything on there.
Yeah. I think you'd have to get CDOT to.
You'd have to get CDOT to.
And what about after you make in front of the library and the RTD, that strip of road, because all the way around the Cook to turns.
So as you see from this map, there's 20 identified areas in town. But what we focused on was what could be attainable in the 12 to 18 month timeframe. So we tended to focus on like three, four different areas to go along with the signage, the moratorium, and the paid parking, that we could actually just move the ball forward. Because what I think we get bogged down in sometimes as a community is, let's have another Subcommittee about possibilities. And so while there's 20 spots here, I think if we could, just if we could, you know, get 120 spots, if we could get 120 spots for our town, and then get the paid parking in, man, and then, then other things, and then the next Subcommittee could start to look at, you know, purchasing some of these ones that are private property, or developing some of these other lots. You know, some of them, like, you know, Linda said, behind the Quickie Mart, that's already there. All we need to do is make sure, you know, have that map that shows directs people there. You know, but, you know, basically, we just look to try and focus on some of the, where we could have a large, get a large number of spots, and something that was attainable that we had funding for, which we have with the DDA, that we had the ability to do without having to go out and get a contractor and get all these people, you know, that we could potentially do within our own town resources. And something that the board would feel good about, saying, hey, you know, we at least made a dent in it. And then if the paid parking actually went through, then we could start using some of that revenue and start looking at some other things. So we basically tried to focus, you know, do the KISS principle, you know, keep it simple soldier there, and try and come up with some very simple and implementable recommendations, because you could really get bogged down in the weeds with lots of details.
Does it help to put these in some type of priority order, so that, you know, look at the easiest things to do and just kind of list those? And we should do it in this order? Does that make any sense?
Well, I was hoping, because I said like three areas, that those were the priorities that we were talking about. But we could certainly put a number on it.
No, no, I meant to present it as priority. So it's no confusion.
Question on the parallel parking though, is people are already doing it. There's just no signage for it. Right? And so from that, actually, I'm very much with you. But to me, it also, those spots did seem like low hanging fruit. But if it's a CDOT issue, then that's not, that's not simple at all. So I don't, but I don't know how far that would extend down peak to peak. But people are using those spots today.
I can.
There's just no signage. They just use it as overflow and they can't find other slots.
And I can speak for St. Rita's, because when we do services, they park on the side of the road. We do it, and there's never been a ticket, there's never been a complaint or anything. I mean, it's pretty wide there, too. But, but you're absolutely right. You have to get CDOT onboard to start painting lines or.
So isn't that also.
Or signage.
Anything on the highway? Yeah. And that's like 200 feet wide, I think, is the right of way back by St. Rita's.
Well, technically, the St. Rita's parking lot is CDOT land.
That would include signage as well.
Right, right. Well, I, what was it? There was an issue that came up with a farmer's market. They wanted to put up signs. Do you remember that? And they had to get CDOT permission to put up a sign on the CDOT, you know, the state highway. And didn't they say no or something?
Yeah, we're having that issue now. They put up cones so they could paint nature zone, and CDOT took them immediately. And so anytime anything crosses into CDOT world, it's going to be gone within 24 hours. I don't know how they do it. It's like, how did you know?
We did talk about, before the Subcommittee convened, we talked about parking. So this would have been Trustee Danforth, Trustee Corvelon, Miranda, and myself. And we looked at the downtown area. So before the Subcommittee was formed, and we looked at, I looked at from surveys that I had of the downtown, areas where there's potential space on the right of way. So for example, West First Street is like 40 feet wide in places. And East Second Street was like 32 or 28, like real narrow. So I mean, the roads really flex in size here. And then there's a lot of encroachment throughout the town, and, you know, in some cases, trees in the right of way and things like that. But yeah, anything in the CDOT right of way is pretty challenged. And obviously, they're, they're on us. They know what's going on up here. But, but, but as Jim said, you know, there's future opportunities to look at stuff. But we were looking for bang for your buck, and stuff that could be done quickly to remedy the situation.
Or at least make a dent in it.
We're just trying to solve a 40-year parking problem, just the four of us. We got it done.
Roger?
It's only been 20 years, but yeah. No, the Lakeview, that's, that's, looks like easy pickin'. I actually made a right-hand turn when I came out of PNF this morning, today. It was seniors' day, by the way. I shouldn't have looked at you. And I just want to say that, you know, I was, when you started talking about the paid parking, it was a good thing I have a pacemaker. I'm okay with it. I guess time has come, after going through Ron Mitchell thing all last year, yeah, it's, it is what it is. There are two good thoughts though. The RTD lot, the little Toboggan Hill, have you guys even talked about and looked at the Toboggan Hill there to the west? That's actually RTD's property that was purchased because it was going to be in overflow, there wasn't going to be enough room, and they'd have to build another lot there. But we could actually, I mean, someone actually, I talked to them about putting in, or even the gravel or whatever, a lot there. But that, that seems to me, that could be a very, very possibility, if certainly they allow it. And there actually was a time in 2018, 2019, when RTD lot used to be full before COVID. And, you know, and people, you know, had, couldn't even get on the bus. The buses were packed. But I'm glad that that's all working out. The other one that I'm going to bring up, though, is my, just like before, the mill levy and us taxpayers, the town shop site. I don't know, I do know all the details, but I maybe have kind of mixed them up over the 10 years. But I personally worked with Ron Stewart and the commissioners, because originally, when we got Mud Lake, we were supposed to build 24 or 12 units. There was definitely part of the Mud Lake the town would provide X amount of low-cost housing.
Town was released from that agreement.
That's correct. Because I went, because, don't remember the treasure before the treasure before the treasure, but backly with working with Alicia.
Eva.
Eva. We were the only part of that group, or that was all part of Mud Lake, who actually was all said and done, had lost money. And Eva said, you know, here we were, every budget, putting $10,000 to pay off the debt for Mud Lake. And I said, well, how, how's that work out? She said, yeah, we still owe $150,000. So we actually, first of all, the mayor then, or her name was, the good mayor, she said, hey, there's a lot right next to mine. You know, I don't mind. Let's see if we can't sell this, which was part of the Mud Lake. So it would be, you know, just to the north of town. What was our mayor's name anyhow?
Was it Sylvia?
She, no, it was, no, 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 the last one. Samaya, yes, Samaya. So we tried to get a lot there and get the. So we tried to get a lot there and get the county to agree that we could sell that lot, and then that we would be whole, because they were going for 150 to $200,000 there in 2010. I talked to Ron Stewart, who was then, you know, part of the commissioner of county, and, you know, I've known him for quite a few years in different meetings. Anyhow, he said, well, we can't do that, but how about we release you of those 12 units? And when you guys move your fire out, when you move the, the public works there, you can sell that to make yourself whole. Well, then we go build the new thing. So the idea then, at least informally, the idea was that that property would be sold, which we started working on as a planning commission, till we found out about all the problems there.
Environmental.
Environmental, right. But then that's supposed to go to help pay off our million-dollar public works garage.
So there actually are no environmental issues at the town?
I only wanted to bring that up, but that's the history of it, and again, it's just defending our, our mill levy and our tax base, which is the highest taxes in Boulder County we pay on our property taxes. So it's just a thought.
No, I'm sorry, sorry. So there are no environmental issues on the lot, we've done all the phases of the environmental testing, and there's nothing of concern. There is a possible water issue in terms of maybe our water lines leaking, but that is not an environmental concern. There is a resolution that designates this spot for housing, for medium-density housing. So there is a housing subcommittee that of course is very interested, but funding is a big challenge. So I think the proposal from the subcommittee is just make it parking until it becomes housing, because it does appear that that is a desire of the board trustees to continue forward with their housing goal.
And it's fine to be, well, I mean, I'm one person, but I totally agree with, yes, it's supposed to be housing, but there shouldn't be a variance to say that we're going to give the housing, the property away, because it's, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of real estate, and it's supposed to actually go to make, you know, our public works debt of our garage whole, or just one part of it, you know. You know, like everything else, you know, it'd end up being millions of dollars, but the Boulder County certainly paid for their property, so that wasn't a discussion. So I, so maybe I interpreted when Billy was saying that he wanted to get housing on there that, you know, not unlike, say, today, that it would be something, well, it's town property, that will, you know, the one there by the RTD is not, was not town property, you know, we shouldn't have to pay anything for it, you know, subsidize. So just a pro and con, and if we subsidize and say it shouldn't be anything, that's fine, but the people ought to know, though, that the idea was that it was supposed to be sold to actually make the Mud Lake debt right.
Did you have a comment, Chris?
Just a couple little things. I think it's a very good plan, I like the Lakeview idea of building that out, it's very good. You know, paid parking, I've been in a lot of cities, I think it's pretty common now. The product that Boulder uses, Park Mobile, I think it's probably one of the best I've seen in a lot of cities that I've visited. You know, the idea of maybe having Monday through Wednesday free might make it easier for people to adopt that are local, might be better for people who are lower income in town. Definitely the first 30 minutes is a good idea. It also doesn't have to stay that way. The other thing I was curious about is, is there any parking enforcement in town at all? Is there any time limits? Have we looked at like on three days? Should there be a two-hour limit? Is that hard to enforce?
It's there, the signs exist, obviously, we don't have the personnel to enforce it. And so one thing that did come with this paid parking discussion is to have a parking enforcement, because our staff has never had the capability.
Yeah, okay, makes sense.
Oh, and Linda already offered, so that's right, Linda volunteered, so we already have an employee.
That was it about the paid parking, then the other thing I did want to bring up, Jim, was, you know, the idea with the town shop property, if you build it, if we build it out for more immediate solution to our challenge, but then we later approve it for housing, well, we have invested a lot in signage and wayfaring to direct people to a lot that's then no longer going to be there, that's, there's a little bit of cost loss there, I would see. The other aspect I was thinking about was where the wayfinding from that lot to town, would that go through Third Street? Because peak to peak right there has no sidewalks, and like I parked at RTD to go to Knotted Route one day, and, you know, you can kind of cut through Tungsten Village and then down Third, and that's fine and all, but, you know, crossing peak to peak, too, we might want to consider for safety, because while maybe 35 right there, we all know people come off, you know, from the north going way too fast until they realize they're in town. Just some things to consider, and then maybe although it won't be phase one, two, or three, should we be engaging CDOT for at least things like building a sidewalk through that area of town on peak to peak?
So Safer Main Streets is already doing that. So we have, so we received a grant for Safer Main Streets, which is to redevelop the sidewalk on the north side of the highway, right in front of the library, and actually to light it up sidewalks for crossings, so you'll cross right from RTD to the library, and then one further down, as well as two on the visitor center. So that is already in the works. It does not obviously connect you kind of all the way around the corner, but speed limit signs will move as well, so you have to be going 25 much earlier. But then the goal would be to kind of like take people down to Third and walk from there. But there is some work, and then CDOT also is redoing the roundabout in 2024, and they plan to do all of the sidewalks up to Eldora, and then also heading as you head out of town. So that is all coming.
Okay, yeah, it's just consideration, I was just thinking about, if we are going to put something there, invest in that, it may go away, and then also, how are people walking through, and what safe paths are there? You know, that's, that's all I think consideration, I was going to just kind of get my two cents on, but I think it's a good plan, it's much needed, for sure.
Good, okay. Do you get enough feedback? And we can always provide more, people think of something. Being that it's almost 10 o'clock, we probably should get on with solar, since it's dark. And then, so, what are your next steps, Jim?
So I will be going to present this to the BOT, I believe, on August 2nd?
August 16th now, so what can I tell you, it just changed.
Okay, and at that time, you know, I'm going to make the same strong push I made to you, you know, as I already made to them, as like, let's do something, let's take the low hanging, you know, let's get what's attainable, you know, 20 sites in there, you know, there's parking on, you know, North Jefferson, there's different, all these different spots, there's potential, you know, they talked about re, you know, possibly, you know, with the signage, let's, maybe we can use the Catholic Church, maybe we can use the Presbyterian Church, maybe we could use this, you know, and I'm trying to encourage them, hey, let's act, let's move forward, and at least if we could get the paid parking, so a lot of the things that we come, I just read an article about how our police department can't afford to pay enough officers in the Boulder Cameron, so if we had $4 million a year coming in from our paid parking fund, it doesn't have to just go for parking, that really becomes a whole, opens up a lot of possibilities for our town. So at this point, I'm just hoping that we can move some of the more simple things forward, and then we could start talking about the more detailed things, and a lot of things are going to be solved by the wayfinding signage and trails for the walkability. So funding starts coming, and we could start developing and building those things. All these different spots and residential areas and places where people can park, well, people from out of town with this wayfinding out, you know, maybe they'll be able to get there, you know, so that's my goal going forward, thank you.
Okay, very good, okay. As I said, if anyone has any further comments before the 16th now. Oh, sorry.
No, perhaps I could wait it until further comments, but I was curious if you'd put thought into potential problems that might arise because of a moratorium, unintended consequences. But I really like the plan, by the way.
So the main, the main issue with the moratorium is about 95% of people that have been required to pay into that parking fund have been given a waiver, and so we see it as.
Just like essentially a moratorium anyway.
Okay.
Yeah, every, they're all receiving variances, and so that's, I mean, the precedent has been set by the board of trustees, that you're going to get a variance, and so not only do we feel like there should be a moratorium, we also, there's $5,000 in it, we'd like to pay it back to the one and only person who was ever paid into it, we'd like to give him the money back.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, being, being 10 o'clock, do we have to, do we have to make a motion to extend?
You don't have those rules.
I can't remember if we ever did that.
You, you haven't, I don't think you ever adopted that.
I didn't think so, but I wanted to check.
And I've heard about you all rolling late into the night, so. We don't want to do that today.
You've been there.
Well, I've heard you guys have gone past midnight, so, we did that yesterday.
Okay, all right, so let's, let's move on then to the solar subcommittee recommendations, and Cynthia, are you going to present this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and.
How about it?
The folks who are hanging out on public virtual meeting have been waiting for this topic to come up, so thanks to them for hanging on through all of the rest of the meeting, appreciate you guys. So our solar subcommittee recommendations, trying to consider best practices to remove zoning barriers, next slide. Our solar subcommittee members, pretty large group, they've got Billy Giblin, Karen Blakemore was with us for a good piece of it, and then she took off to work on transportation projects. Erica Thorley's a sustainability coordinator, and Melody Baumover, co-chair of Sustainability Advisory Board, Larry Tazad is on the Sustainability Advisory Board, Whitney Owens is our local solar installer, she lives out of Hurricane Hill, built her own house, she's written solar codes, and myself. We have met five times, next slide. So part of these are all coming from the best management practices, so when I came in January and February, we were talking about those best practices that were derived from Solsmart, so we were looking at the industry recommendations, Solsmart looks at improving solar in municipalities and different ways to do that through building permitting and land use, things like that. A lot of Netherlands issue is we don't have a lot of mentions of solar, so that is seen as a barrier when communities have solar mentioned in their code, they see more solar installations. So we want to promote solar in the town and looking at ways to do that. One of them is the recommendations, these were pretty much taken word for word from Solsmart, solar energy system, in general, solar energy system for an accessory ground mount, solar energy system for building integrated, I'm not going to read these to you, but these were the definitions that were pretty straightforward from Solsmart, next slide. Solar energy system, this is, these I will read, solar energy system large scale, ground mount, solar energy system occupies more than 40,000 square feet of surface area, is a principal use on the lot. Solar energy system medium scale, ground mount, solar energy system occupies 40,000 square feet surface area or less, principal use on the lot. Solar energy system small scale means a ground-mounted solar energy system occupies up to 1,750 square feet of solar panel surface area, or solar panels that are mounted solely on the existing roof. Small-scale solar energy systems considered an accessory use upon the lot. So we did tweak this one, this particular definition, we wanted to support as much solar on the roof as possible, the main consideration for limitation was fire code pathways. So we want to make sure that we follow that, other than that, we would like them to be able to have as much solar as they can possibly put there, and then the 1750 was more for a ground mount system. Solar energy system roof mount, obviously, it's structurally mounted and ballasted to the roof of a building or structure, next slide. Medium and large-scale ground mount systems. So because we were looking at things that were in the 40,000 square foot range, which is around the size of a lot up in Big Springs, just under an acre, that's really large, and what we talked about was because that's a lot of area to cover with ground mount systems, that a large scale or medium should come for a special review use. That way, if somebody is like, you know, I would love a neighbor who is all solar, quietest neighbor I would ever have, but some people would not want that equipment next to them, we thought that would give the public process. So while we're trying to look at ways of removing barriers and don't want to create extra steps, because that is large scale, large and medium scale, we thought that that would be important to go with an SRU, and that way you get the public weigh-in, public comment, and have a process there for the review and approval, next slide. Then we talked building height, and as Billy had sent an email, he noted, this was the heft of our discussion, this was probably three or four discussions, I was at a class for one of them, so I think when they made the final determination, I was not there, and there was some other discussion that came up. What we talked about was roof-mounted systems, mounted as flush as possible to the roof, and panels could exceed the height of the roof line, consequently, the maximum height permitted in the zoning district by no more than five feet as measured from the highest point of the roof deck. Five feet is pretty common in most municipalities, that's what a lot of them are recommending. When we talked with Whitney Owens, who was the solar installer, what she talked about in terms of the mounting of the rack and things, that it would need at least three to four feet. So five feet seemed like a pretty standard thing in most towns, that's what was considered. For buildings that are already above 35 feet, and I don't think we have too terribly many of them, I think this is really more concerning flat roofs, there are some existing buildings that are above 35 feet tall, but not too many. Mounted panels may reach a height of no more than 40 feet tall, and solar panels proposed to go above 40 feet in height should apply for a variance to exceed height standards. We did come to the board of zoning adjustment, of which Roger sits on and Billy sits on, and Billy's in that subcommittee, and he was not in Maine canoeing at the time, so he was able to attend and talk about the discussions. But we did present to the board of zoning adjustment, who is in charge of looking at variances for dimensional standards, they had some comments, but they, we did, we did kind of, we didn't reconvene the subcommittee, but from some of their comments, especially regarding roof heights, we did talk about this with Whitney, the solar, our solar expert, and communicate a little bit about that. Part of what her intention and the intentions behind that were to support solar, so even for new construction, that was not a conversation that I was a part of, but even for new construction to exceed so that it would support solar. And then ground-mounted systems, when we looked at ground-mounted systems, they were, for all the zones, it's between 25 and 20 feet, so for max height for accessories, so we felt like that was adequate, that, that having it at that height should, should be adequate. And we can back up to talk about some of this stuff, but I'm going to roll forward in the slides, and then we can back up, so make your notes and then come at me. Next slide, lot coverage. So when you look at, did I spell it wrong here? Darn it all, it's an I. It's an I, not aggro, it's agrivoltaic, sorry. They combine ground-mounted PV with vegetation underneath, there's a farm down in Boulder called Jaxx, and they're doing that. It actually helps the crops because it provides cover from the intense UV rays, water runs off the panels. And so what we talked about was, if you had a vegetative cover below the panels, so you have your mounting, you know, your ground mount, but if you don't have a concrete pad, it would not create more impervious surface, water would run off the panels. So what the subcommittee supported is, if you have vegetative cover underneath, then it does not constitute lot coverage, but if you have a concrete pad, six-foot pad, what have you, that is going to contribute to lot coverage and impervious surface. There's a little link there, if you want to know more about agrivoltaics, sorry, I spelled it wrong, oops. Next slide, setbacks. Ground-mounted systems would follow accessory setbacks, no change to that, and then vision clearance area would be a necessary consideration in order to avoid traffic impacts, that's a big key, I'm going to look at that with signs and pretty much anything that someone's going to try to stick out in their yard. Obviously, we know there are places in town with signs and other things where you have to creep pretty far into the intersection before you can see around it, we want to avoid any safety issues with that. I know that Commissioner Glasser, at our meeting in January or February, she had mentioned snow blowing in, what Billy had mentioned, Commissioner Giblin, in the email that he What Billy had mentioned, Commissioner Giblin, in the email that he sent to the commission when he talked about lot coverage, was that if it's up on a pier, that it's, that would, should help for the wind drifted snow that would blow in. Next slide. And this is the last slide and then we'll back up and talk. Solar systems would be exempt from performance standards. One thing that Whitney Owens, our expert, had mentioned is they're specifically coded to absorb as much light as possible. So the intention is to reduce glare so that it's pulling in all of that solar. So what we wanted to do was exempt them from performance standards regarding glare as they are designed to not have glare and they have less glare than windows. So that is it for our recommendations and then we can back up to any points that we want to discuss more.
Okay, maybe we should do that first before we go up into the public. Does anyone have any questions or want to raise any points that Cynthia mentioned? We can do that, but, well, we will, but I just want to see if there's any burning.
About the whole presentation? I'm sorry, Mel, you want us just to comment on anything or anything?
Right. If you have any questions right now, then we'll go to public.
No, not really. No questions, just to comment, feedback.
Okay. All right, let's open it up for public discussion then.
They are members of the solar subcommittee, so they're probably, talk about how great our recommendations are.
Okay, well, we don't want to repeat anything you said, but if they have any additional comments.
Yeah, thanks so much, everyone. My name is Erica Thorley. I'm the sustainability coordinator for the town. And I don't have anything to add, you know, off of what Cynthia's already shared. I'm really here just to kind of help answer questions and support Cynthia based on the many discussions we've had regarding the solar ordinance update. So I'm really curious to hear what you all, what thoughts you have and what concerns and questions and other, you know, other things we may want to add to this, just see where the conversation goes.
Okay, good. Thank you. Anything else?
This is Melody Baumhofer. I am the co-chair of the Sustainability Advisory Board and I've been participating in these meetings and it's been a really thoughtful discussion, I think, amongst all of us. There were times that we didn't agree on things and we kind of came down to this, you know, these proposals we have before you that I think we did finally all agree on, which is nice to see. So like Erica said, I'm just here and happy to answer any questions about, you know, what we discussed and looking forward to seeing what you guys have to say about it. Thank you.
Okay, excellent. All right, then we'll turn it back over to the commission for questions or comments. Roger, you had a comment?
Well, I was just the thought that actually, that there was a review a couple of months ago and, you know, where you mentioned the idea of new builds. And, you know, I thought that my, what I remembered was that new builds would then have to comply to the 35. So I just question that maybe there could be drafted at least some guidelines of, you know, as a last resort, that they should be able to go to 40 feet on a new build and, and that they would have to maybe go to the BZA to get a variance. Because it seems like somewhere in the entire architectural plan, they ought to be able to figure some way out to, you know, to find an alternative. So I'm not, obviously solar's time has come, but the idea of actually having to go to 40 feet on a new build should be a last resort. I'll leave it at that.
I also wanted to ask, I thought I heard you saying in the presentation, Cynthia, did you say that that would be, for that to extend above the 35-foot height limit, that that would require an SRU?
No.
Okay. So that would be my recommendation.
It would be a blanket approval. The intention was to eliminate barriers. So barriers could be having to go for an SRU. And we kind of have, you know, as our subcommittee discussed it, it's like, there is code allowance, I can't remember. But there's code allowance for mechanical equipment on roofs. And that requires an SRU. So that doesn't eliminate a barrier, but would add a barrier. So if we included solar in that kind of mechanical equipment, like elevator shafts and other things, then that would create a case-by-case barrier for folks. The other way of going for a variance, also the same thing. So when the subcommittee discussed eliminating barriers, and yes, we did initially talk about new builds could just meet the, the building height. I wasn't at that meeting where they kind of concluded this discussion, but from my understanding of what they talked about is that builders are going to look to maximize as much space as they can and, and make as much profit as they can. And the fear was if they are not able to go above, then they will build to 35 feet and just not have solar. And, and that was the concern is that we could support solar a lot more if we allow that leniency. Obviously, you know, Billy and I took the strongest stance. I clerked for this planning commission for the last nine years. I have a fairly good understanding of how folks are going to operate despite, you know, having new members. And so Billy and I had definitely talked about that through the subcommittee of, you know, we may not get support, you know, from some members of the planning commission for this. This is absolutely their purview. They, you know, between the Board of Zoning Adjustment and the Planning Commission, this is, this is their wheelhouse. So this is what they're looking at. But ultimately, and as Billy noted, as Billy had noted, you know, he was against it. You know, we had somebody who wanted to kind of blanket approval, the whole thing. And Billy and I were taking more of a stance of like, I don't know that that's going to fly with the planning commission and other people maybe concerned. Andrew Bliss, who's on the Board of Zoning Adjustment, he just started working for the town in utilities, actually. But he joined the Board of Zoning Adjustment. He lives down on Third Street. And so he was certainly concerned because they had, you know, there was a lot of concern over the Little Bear, or Little Bear PUD that went in and they were held to a height standard of 24 feet, one inch. In a, you know, where you could have a maximum height of 35 feet across the town. I had never seen the board hold to that kind of height requirement. It was a little shocking to me, but honestly, when you go past that area of town and you look up at those duplexes, they are so tall compared to everything else around them. I mean, really starkly, much taller. So I know there's a lot of concern about height and that's why we talked so, you know, at so many meetings about height. Because there is a lot of concern about that. People don't want to have their views taken. You know, part of what we discussed a little bit was, I mean, it starts to get pretty technical as, as, as we, you know, as we kind of initially started talking about it, like, maybe we consider something different for the smaller districts because they're pressed in tighter, whereas in Big Springs, maybe my solar wouldn't affect, you know, Stephanie's solar up there. She wouldn't even notice it, wouldn't bother her. And I think ultimately, what we looked at when I did some research and looking at SolSmart recommendations was five feet was pretty standard for many towns. And when Whitney explained that you need, so, they say flush mount as close to, you know, the roof as possible, but when you're looking at that, there needs to be airflow underneath the panels, otherwise they can overheat. So that's part of the, the racking and the airflow that needs to go underneath. So she had estimated about three to four feet for that. So we just kind of went with five feet as the, the broad standard that we saw across other municipalities.
Is, do you think this is a problem? Do we have that many cases where there's 35 feet of an issue or that we can't go to an SRU, since it is such a sensitive issue?
Or the BZA, I think.
Or, or for a variance, exactly. Maybe a variance is a better way to do it.
I don't think that there are so many issues with that. I think, I think a flat roof, like the community center itself here, you know, these panels up here are sandbagged on the building. Somehow they're holding, I don't know how. But, you know, that's, that's where, that's where you're gonna, you're going to see a lot of equipment and it's going to, you know, it's going to be more of a visual thing. You know, obviously with, with, with roof mounting, not as big of a deal. And as Rick Hendrickson had noted, I think at a planning commission meeting, he had solar and he said even where it was placed, that it wasn't optimal, the panels have gotten so much better that he still is getting energy at like five o'clock in the evening on the east side. So I think there's been a lot of technological improvements. The challenge, when I looked at this is, yes, there, I'm sure there are buildings with slope in the town that are above height. I can think of a few. And, you know, but mostly with stuff that's new build, that's something I'm certainly looking at with height is a big concern. And obviously, anything new that gets proposed in the town, people are concerned about the height. So I don't know that it, that it is so many, but when the subcommittee had talked about allowing it for new construction in order to promote solar so that people don't try to maximize the height for building and then just say, fine, we just won't have solar here. Like, we're, we're trying to, to think in the future and the way the town wants to be. And so in looking at getting things EV-ready and looking at, you know, with the building code of like multifamily having to, having to be able to support that, you're looking at trying to have that infrastructure ready to plug in and ready to go and ready to support that. We obviously know, I went to a climate talk that Commissioner Herring did a number of years ago at the library. It was fantastic about climate change. Steve was a planetary scientist. You know, you guys have obviously known how impactful what's going on with our climate is and the cost of energy is increasing. We want to support solar as much as we can. And so those, those were the recommendations that the subcommittee made to support it as much as, as could be done without having to add an extra step. Because some people, when I talk to them about SRUs, some people are very clear, like, you know, regarding any of the property I talk about, yep, I'm going to come through. Or they'll, they'll go for a variance. They will push through. A lot of folks, I talk to them, I tell them all the requirements and it's crickets. I don't hear from them again. And so it's hard to say. I mean, some people are just going to move forward and other people, that's the end of the conversation and they're just not going to do it. And so where's a middle ground that we can find where we are promoting solar and really being forthright about that? As Commissioner Cornell noted, solar's been around longer than our zoning code by at least a decade. I did a report in like fourth grade on solar because my dad was really about solar and I like created a whole like trash compactor on solar. I made stuff up that I was drawing. So clearly I needed to be the one to represent solar for the subcommittee because it's been in my blood for a long time. So, so I, you know, I do understand that, that, that height is a concern in the town. And any recommendations you guys have, you know, certainly would be valuable. I mean, I know there's someone on the BOT who's going to blanket support any solar in any way.
Well, I would say that, you know, not having an ability for the public and people that live next to a new build to have a venue to comment, it, it would be bad. You know, I, I understand what you're saying. We want to promote that and remove barriers, but sometimes, you know, you know, I wouldn't want to be the guy that has, you know, lives in Old Town and has a 35-foot build go up next to me and then additional five foot for solar and not be able to do a thing about it. You know, so, so I, I think there's a reason why, why we have a few barriers in there, so that there's an opportunity for people to come out and say, now, they don't always get their way. You know, sometimes like those duplexes, yeah, it, it seems, you know, like they kind of got, the builders got the short end, but, but I think it's important for the community to be able to come out and at least feel heard as opposed to say, sorry, this is what's good for our, you know, I mean, it could be that the planning commission or the BZA then says, okay, we've heard your, heard what you have to say and we're going with the builder on this. But at least having a venue for them to be able to come out and voice their opinions and their objections if that's possible and, and have everybody, I mean, that, that's what we're here for, right? Is to be able to get public comment from the community.
Right.
I have a, just to add on to that, I mean, what we're talking about with the five feet is sightlines, town height, we're talking about visibility, it's blocking someone's view. 35 feet's been well established for the total build height. When you say five feet measured from the highest point of the roof deck, you're saying the peak or the, if it's an A-frame, the, the top, you're saying they have five additional feet to go? I mean, they could build it in such a way, whether it's off the roof, to not still exceed the highest point of the, of the building and still theoretically have a lot of solar real estate, I would imagine. I think a variance to go beyond that does make sense. I mean, I don't think it prohibits or discourages building solar. It just says a total height, total height. This is someone's sightline, view, the height of the town. I don't know, that's, that's from what my initial thought is.
Well, you're talking mainly on flat roofs, right?
Yeah.
No.
No.
That was originally where we started the conversation, was on flat roofs. This was on any structures.
Okay. You know, what Chris pointed out, if I could just weigh in for one more time for just a minute. Yeah, on a pitched roof, it seems there's no reason in the world to go above the ridge line, really. And I think what we're talking about, I mean, look around town, what has happened other than here, this building. I don't know that we have an example. And you look at most of the homes, I'm even surprised about the four feet, but, you know, my son-in-law actually has solars on their house in Denver and, you know, I, I don't know how far it is above the airspace, but basically it, it's following the shingle line. I mean, if it's a foot above the shingles, I'd be shocked or two, you know, that part. So that should all worked out. But I guess I'll go back to my first statement. I would ask or encourage the committee to maybe, just to review the idea that, well, number one, that if there actually is an issue that above the 35, that it should actually go to the BZA, not the special review, SRU.
Right. No, I think variance, right.
And there actually is terms already in the code for solar in, in our, in our chapter for the BZA.
Two or three.
To make a variance. But even if it was under, say, a print review or, you know, project review at, at, at even your level or at, at our.
At administrative level?
Or administrative, you know, our inspectors, who's our subcontractors, you know, they review the plans. That they would, that there would just be wording, that the committee would actually work to say, here's a wording that you would ask a developer to show that he has exhausted all other areas, that there's no other way that he can do, you know, sole rawness and, and to show and really establish the necessity to put them up on, you know, the roof or the roof mounted type things on a flat roof. So, you know, at least there got to be something there to, to show that, you know, there's no other alternatives because obviously solar is something that's here and it's a good thing. I'm not, there's no reason not to do it. But they should, you know, they should actually have to show that, you know, there's basically a necessity to do this. And on new builds, you know, it seems like that should actually, you should have to go to the BZA to get a variance.
Cynthia, in your discussions with some of the advisors with the solar industry, is exceeding the height of the pit, of a pitched roof really that common? Like, I would imagine it's not, it's pretty much going to be limited to flat roofs. I would, from what I've seen, just running around towns, you know, is it a small subset, you know?
I mean, if we look at, you know, existing buildings, I don't, I mean, it's hard to say. We haven't surveyed the town for, you know, what, what are things built to? The zoning code was adopted in 1981. Roger sits on the Board of Zoning Adjustment as an alternate member and he knows that there are buildings that were built after 80, you know, after 81 that did not meet setbacks or had other issues. And it depended. The, the building permitting bounced back and forth between Boulder County and Netherlands during the 90s and 2000s. during the nineties and two thousands. Um, so during that time, what I have seen is often when Boulder County was doing the permitting, we had whomever, you know, it depended really on the administration. And in some cases, maybe the town wasn't looking well enough at the zoning and, you know, they didn't meet the setbacks. And so, you know, I've got letters of like, this permit is approved. And it's like, well, that variance was then approved because the town allowed that. Um, so it's really hard to say because I don't think, you know, we haven't, we haven't looked across the town to say, you know, what's above height. Um, I've been working for the town for nine years and doing the building permitting for that entire time. So to the best of my ability, I'm looking at building height. It's one of the first things I'm gonna look at. I look at all the zoning aspects and try to make sure they're compliant. Um, that's my world. So, um, certainly, you know, those were the concerns that I, I brought in with the subcommittee, um, about, uh, trying to, you know, s- support solar while not, um, affecting the neighbors too much. Um, but I do think, you know, it is a valid concern that when you think about building, they're gonna push that, they're gonna maximize their building for the money and for as much square footage as they can get. And so what that might mean is we're setting them up so that they will not support solar until someday when Netherland says, yeah, everyone should have solar.
I'm only one voice, but I actually can't buy that because thinking this day and age and the incentives for solar, I just can't, I can't swallow that really.
Yeah, I think they can.
And I think it's almost the idea that, yeah, if you give them carte blanche, sure they'll do it, why not? But I think if we'd actually say, no, uh, you know, in this day and age in the development, there's no, no developer is gonna let, you know, an obstacle like that, in my opinion, stand in the way. So I, you know, I think that's, yeah.
Yeah.
It, it's just hard, it's hard to take from what.
Yeah.
You know, when every day you, you know, people, you know, even my son-in-law told me, you know, you don't gotta do it, but sure, I'm selling my house and maybe even once, you know. So yeah, it's not advantage to me, but the next person, you know, there's no reason not for a, a person that's moving the house, gotta live there for 10 or more years not to go down that road. So I don't, I don't know. Same thing with a developer. It's just so much advantage to, for solar.
If I could add some context, um, this is Erica again, and I wanted to just step back for a moment. I don't know how familiar you all are with the Soul Smart designation process, but that's really what started this conversation. And please feel free to jump in Cynthia. But, um, I can put in the chat, Netherland with Cynthia's big lift was able to receive bronze designation. And really to receive silver or gold, we needed to look at, you know, our solar ordinance and to try to make Netherland more solar friendly. As Cynthia shared, you know, maybe we were already, but there wasn't written statements around solar. And so, um, I, I absolutely respect everything you all are saying and there's a reason you're on this board. But I think the whole goal is to reduce the barriers to solar. And if you want to think about it as a, like a right to produce your own energy, um, I think that it, it's, you know, when we talked about this and I wish Whitney was here because she really kind of lives and breathes solar on a daily basis. But her whole point was we don't necessarily mandate other utilities for a home. And if you want to think about the fact of the future to be renewable energy, of which solar rooftop arrays are one of the biggest solutions to the energy crisis and climate change, we want to think about it in that perspective of, yes, you know, I understand going to get a, um, a review and going to the BZA, you know, if you do have a new build, but that's one more barrier. And I think we want to really target this solution to this larger dilemma of climate change and this warming world, um, even just, you know, with fires in, in the Netherland area and all these pieces that we deal with on a regular basis. Um, so just to kind of put that Soul Smart designation, um, on the table, I think there's a lot, as Cynthia shared, there's a lot of communities that, that have this for new build for a very specific reason. Um, and we did look at other communities, you know, the city of Boulder, um, is one that has said, you know, this five foot is, is something. They just don't want to have a barrier to solar. So I hope that helps with context. I'll put a link to the Soul Smart so you all can look at that. But it's a, a really great program and there's not a lot of communities that have been recognized as of yet. And Netherland's one of them with this bronze. And we've been looking to get silver or gold.
Uh, I've got a question just about, cause I'm the newest one probably to town here. How long has this 35 foot, uh, height restriction been in town?
This guy could tell you, right next to you.
Since, since.
Eighty-one.
Okay, okay.
I think that was approved in February of 82.
Something Ron Mitchell has said for years, and I don't know if this is, is valid, um, but something he said about, uh, cause he's always wanted to go up in height to add density. That's one of his pieces. And what, what he said the 35 feet was derived from was that was the height of the ladders for the fire trucks that we had. So we physically couldn't reach higher. Um, so that's where 35 feet was derived. I don't know if that's true. It may be boilerplate zoning code. Um, when you look at codes across the Colorado, you're gonna see a lot of chapters in the same places because all our little municipalities adopted the same model zoning code and model codes, um, and then just tweaked them. So we have a lot of boilerplate stuff in our code.
Right. Makes sense.
It's three, it's three stories.
You know, it's three stories. I mean, I, I guess the way I look at it is we're not restricting anybody's freedom from using solar or handling their energy decisions the way they want to handle them. I think it's just, there's a height restriction. You can build a 30-foot home with a five-foot solar panel with this guidelines. I, I think this is the way I'm reading it. I'm not reading it correctly. Um, it's the going above 35, that's when a variance would be needed. Um, I don't know, that's, that's I guess the way I look at it. And I still, I don't see the need for the language to be that specific about five feet in the sense that most solar panels are mounted to the roof and they don't go above the roof line unless it's a flat roof. That's, and, and, and then you're deciding, you're making a conscious choice that you want to build a 35-foot building and then add another additional footage, uh, in height. I would think a variance makes sense to me. Or buy, build a 30-foot home with a five-foot solar panel mount. That's the way, I don't know. That's the way I would look at it, I guess.
Yeah, we need to, we need to even clarify residential's 24 though, isn't it? This commercial, that's 35. Whereas commercial is residential, 35?
You're talking for.
Height, roof height.
For primary structure?
Yeah.
Thirty-five feet across the whole land of Netherland?
Thirty-five across.
Every district.
That's right.
Um, actually, when you look, we, we actually kind of did this discussion, uh, remember one time, you know, how many homes, actually how many buildings were actually built? And it really was the, uh, the, the real, whatever the shop right there, you know, we went like 10 years with one commercial building being built. And now we have the, the tin shed and the one over on.
Up there.
Yeah, and, and Kathmandu. So I mean, in a lot of ways, we've done, you know, in 10 years, there've been five new buildings. And, and actually the only one that I could think of what might, would actually need to have a variance would be the, the, the low-cost housing right down here. Cause they went right to the maximum. They get their three floors in there and to do it. So those would probably be the only ones that actually would have to do a rooftop and.
I just think it's gonna be minuscule number.
It really would be in the number. So yeah, I mean, I can understand your idea of not to, to remove barriers, but, you know, that's kind of an informal one, but possibly one new build here in the last 10 years would have had to come to the Board of Variants. And I, and they probably would have taken 15 minutes to say, yeah, we've done everything we could. You know, it needs to be there.
Yep.
And so, you know, to me, it's, yes, it's a little barrier, but, um, and I can't imagine residential person wanting to build their home and then doing five feet on top of that. I mean, that's, that's just not an issue. So really it's, um, I mean, I guess go back to the committee, maybe just take a second look and say, there's some way to, at least to, to do guidelines and say on that, you know. Or, or it should just go to the BZA on new, new builds because it's gonna be very, very few people, they're gonna need, you know, need to do that. And if any kind of a builder planner can go from the get-go, knowing he has to do that, it's hard to imagine that they can't, you know, get that into their skin.
Any other comments that?
I guess I repeat.
Mike, Linda?
I did have a question and that's, uh, how difficult is it to get a variance? I mean, that's probably a crystal ball question and unfair, but.
There are no guarantees in land use, as you will see when you look at special review uses. And this is something I'm gonna guide every single applicant who we talk to about land use applications, whether variance or SRU, there are no guarantees. I don't care how good it looks.
Yeah.
This is up to a commission of eight people, nine, if the, you know, if the trustee was weighing in on something, um, and six others. So you're putting your fate into 14 hands with a variance. Um, that just goes to the Board of Zoning Adjustment. It does not go to the Board of Trustees. The only appeal for a variance is district court. And when you go for a variance, that's a covenant that runs upon that property moving forward. So if you get a variance and then you sell that property, someone else is hemmed into the variance that you created for that property.
So not easy.
So, I mean, I'm not gonna say it's not easy. There's, there's five specific criteria that the board has to consider. So while they can think a lot of things, their criteria is very specific. It's something, it's, uh, there are physical conditions or circumstances upon a property. Because of said physical circumstances or conditions upon a property, it cannot be developed in conformance with the zoning chapter. The third criteria is the applicant cannot create the hardship. Most anytime somebody is proposing something, they are creating their own hardship. However, they didn't plat the lot or they didn't build the building perhaps, or, you know, some other things. Um, the fourth criteria is it cannot change the essential character of the neighborhood, um, or affect adjoining lots and their development. And the fifth is the variance that is granted is the minimum that will afford relief. So if somebody says, hey, I would like a 14-foot variance, the board can say, you can do it in seven feet if you change your design and that's what we'll give you. So there's no guarantees and you may not get what you want. There is a tier three variance possibility for energy use years. Um, maybe the community center, when they put panels here, that, that might've happened. I haven't, I haven't found that documentation, but, um, but we haven't had anyone come forward for it. I don't know if they are. I'm not sure. I'm not sure. When you look at it from forest, it looks pretty tall, but, you know, but nonetheless, um, you know, there's very, very specific criteria. And then obviously if you're looking at something for energy use, um, you know, maybe they would consider like, you know, well, if you're putting it here, this is where the optimum solar is, you know, rather than putting it on this side of the lot where it isn't. But again, I haven't seen one of those come forward. Maybe we will see more of them come forward, but, um, no one's really pushed, pushed for that. So.
Okay.
Um, it's a possibility. No one's taking it.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any other comments on this? And I, I'd just like to revisit the rest of the presentation to see if anyone has any other issues with anything else. Try to wrap this up.
The whole, the whole presentation was very.
I think this is the only sticking point.
I, I anticipated this, folks.
Okay.
What's that?
Do you think the, uh, the committee even get together and try to discuss this feedback?
I mean, I can, I will certainly bring it to, um, the, the subcommittee and, you know, let them know what the concerns are. I have been.
There have been two of them listening.
Exactly. I mean, they're aware and, uh, this is something that, uh, Commissioner Giblin and I have stated from the very start. Uh, so, you know, I, it's not, it's not unexpected because BZA and Planning Commission are looking at these dimensional pieces. So this is, you know, in section 16 dash 33 yardage and bulk requirements, building heights in there. So this is also under the purview of the Planning Commission for sure.
Cynthia, I would recommend maybe getting back with the plan, or the subcommittee before bringing this to the Board of Trustees. So you can sort that out. And I know, so the original plan was this, it's gonna go to the board next week. And so I think let's just delay that. See if we can get that group back together.
I think that's a good idea.
Good idea.
Stephanie, did you have any comments? I know you wanted to.
Um, my, mine was just that I think that, you know, one of the things I think that makes things clear is when the code is clear. And so, um, I personally don't actually have an issue if they want to go to the five feet, but whatever they do decide, I would suggest that it just be a zoning code versus having it be SRU reviews or variances because that's where it becomes very subjective, right? And I think that, I mean, most of you've been on this board with me for a while. So, you know, that, you know, what the code says, I think is what we should, we follow, right? And if you wanna, we should not change it for case by case, we should change the code. And so, um, but again, I, you know, 35 feet with an extra, and, and from what I have seen, I know, um, in other, it's pretty rare that a solar panel actually needs to be a full five feet. The exceptions are when the roofs are completely flat, right? So in most cases, you're really talking about two to three feet at the most. Um, and I think that the trade-off between that and encouraging solar, I think it's worth it. But that's, you know, um, the BOT will need to ultimately make that decision. But regardless of where they land, I suggest not using the SRU or variance process and just set a code that will work. Um, because it's too, it will become very subjective. And so to the, with the more, the more we can have the code, I think be clear, the easier it is to implement, easier for the town to enforce, um, et cetera. So.
Of course, it's clear now at 35 feet. The, the issue is whether or not to change it to 40 for solar panels in the code. Right. And I, I'm hearing a lot of resistance to that, but. Okay. Well, that's our input on that. I think everyone has spoken. Linda, did you have any? You already, okay. All right.
Were there any other concerns about any other pieces other than the building height?
I think everything else looked good. That's my personal opinion.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Let's move on to, we're gonna wrap this up by midnight.
Yeah.
We'll move on to the, the infamous, infamous and informative town report.
I was gonna say, it's in the packets. I don't have to go over all of it.
The highlights. Like I always say, do the highlights.
So I think one of the biggest highlights, unfortunately, is, is the increase in COVID cases. So when we, so we test our wastewater and when we did that two weeks ago, it was 220% higher than the previous week. And so unfortunately, our, then our lab equipment broke. Uh, so we couldn't test last week, but we tested this week. And so we should have our results to see where we stand. But we do know that we are seeing an increase in cases. And unfortunately, our testing sites is, are gone, the site that was here. So we do have the rapid tests at the community center and town hall. Um, and then the vaccine clinic comes up kind of as needed, but we did lose that like repetitive service. Um, obviously.
Quick question?
Yeah.
So I was looking at a lot of the links that you had sent and I, I just can't find statistics on Netherland. Do they have Boulder County?
Yeah.
Um, but they don't really have. So do we have any?
We don't have any. And so I did ask, cause I knew it's a, after this, it was an interest of the board, but I have yet to receive access to Netherland specific data.
Okay.
So unfortunately I still don't have that.
I understood what you meant about wastewater testing.
So we test the wastewater for COVID. That's a, yeah. And so that's when, it was alarming enough for Boulder, or CDPHG to alert Boulder County Public Health that we had this 220% increase from previous cases or pre- previous results.
They went from two to three?
Well, I think we went from more than that. And I don't know what the current, so because we're not testing, that when we were testing every week, we had a general idea of the kind of what our transmission rates were looking like. But now we're not testing weekly here at the community center.
It's testing, you know, with cases that might fall.
And we also don't know if that's local or visitors. And of course we have thousand people coming a day in the summer. We just know there's COVID in the wastewater. That may or may not be true.
Okay.
Well, speaking of.
Moving right along.
Moving right along to infrastructure.
Roger.
Yeah, yeah. We're just in the highlights. So, um, I did attend an infrastructure summit because we have that infrastructure bill coming. We don't know all of the specifics about that, but town would be really interested in looking at that from a transportation and water and. in looking at that from a transportation and water and wastewater. Oddly, the more funding is for water, which is wonderful, but most communities' needs are within wastewater, but the distribution is really skewed. So it's like 10% of the funds go to wastewater, 90 go to water. Not that we don't need water improvements, but we really are looking at a wastewater expansion as one of our most critical needs here in the next couple of years. So that will be interesting. We did have an advisory board and commission collaborative meeting that some of you attended, and it seemed like everyone loved it. I hope that that's still the sentiment. Our next one is going to be on, oh, Erica, if she's still on, but she's probably not, is that?
I think it's the fourth.
The fourth, thank you. August 4th, from 4 to 6 at Very Nice Brewing Company. Or you can come on Thursday, August 18th to Salto in the morning at 8:30. So trying to mix, trying to mix, if not for those of you who aren't awake yet, it's for the other one. We know, we know. Let's see, one of the really cool things is we were selected to, for a reimagined destinations program, which is the Colorado Tourism Office. So what they do, a destination assessment, they provide us with staffing, 100 hours of free consulting, we do an all-day community visioning activity, and just look at ways in which we can promote and support Netherland, and, and obviously, we need the sales tax, but do so in a way that's meaningful and not just flooding our town, really looking at some of the complexities like parking that we have and then some of those issues that would prohibit someone from maybe enjoying their time in Netherland. So we're looking forward to that. Public Works is busy. They were going to pave school road tomorrow, but it's supposed to rain, so that's postponed a week. Nikki Seem is hard at work doing the GOCO grants of the Barker Meadows Park area. And I think the biggest thing is I'm happy to report the utilities department has made pretty much a full recovery. So many of you may know, we did lose the entire utilities department about six weeks ago. We are able to rebuild. We now have five staff members. We also were able to bring on a contract ORC, which is an operator in responsible charge. You have to have that for those facilities. So he provides some of his staffing support. So we went from zero to now nine people operating our facilities. So we did a rapid and amazing recovery, and I'm very excited about that. And I'm sleeping better at night. We don't, we are still handling billing amongst our internal team, so I'm handling billing right now. The reason for that is because we don't know how to train if we don't know how to do the job. So we will be posting for that position probably in about six weeks, so we can hire for that, but that's okay, that's only a missing piece. We cared more about the operators at the time. Obviously, our challenge though is Netherland Police Department. We have lost all of our officers in the Netherland Police Department for a variety of different reasons, leaving us just solely with Marshall Fine Levin. So right now, the board is at a crossroads of having to make a really tough decision of, I was investing more, of course, in this department and trying to be really creative in recruitment, or turning over to Boulder County Sheriff's Office. So they're gathering tons of public comment about that, but it, the need is now, right now, Marshall Fine Levin is working 14-hour days almost every day, unless we can fill the shift with Boulder County Sheriff's Office deputies, who are then working overtime. So it is a crisis situation that we're facing there. And I don't necessarily have a directive of where the board is going. We have been told to just kind of start doing some heavy recruiting and seeing if we can bring in police officers, but we're obviously commit, we're competing against other large jurisdictions, you know? Commerce City is down over 100 officers. And so, and they've got more money than we do. So it is, it's a tough situation to be in, and so I guess we'll just keep everyone updated. But there's a lot of rapid meetings happening quickly as we try to figure out what the path forward is for police. And that's that.
Okay, any questions? Okay, thank you. Thank you for that, Miranda. Anything other business? Any, anybody want to bring anything up at this point? If your brain is still working? Okay.
We will probably have a, an SRU next month.
We will. That was my next question.
Outdoor patio kind of thing.
Okay.
One of the last businesses that was approved temporarily.
And Attorney Madison is interested in doing a training with the Planning Commission at some point. I don't believe she could do August. I think she was looking at September to go over things like quasi-judicial, ex parte communication, that type of thing.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see if we can find either a Dr. Cog, or perhaps we can dig up a previous. It'd be very useful to go through that training. Jim and I did a day-long training. It was absolutely wonderful.
In Golden. It's the Planner 101 training.
Planner 101, that was a great, so, and it wouldn't hurt for others to retake it as well, right? Yeah. You know, summer's tough because a lot of people are on vacation, so I think the fall is the best. Okay, anything else?
Whoa, who was the second? Is that Roger? All in favor, opposed, abstaining? Okay, everyone's in favor.
All right, good night. Thank you, everyone. Sorry we ran so late, but.
Meeting is adjourned at 10:57 PM.
Yeah.